All right, good evening everyone. Let's follow the February 24th, 2005 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Uh, we're going to read a one-time session approval, so I'm going to watch that from Senator Edwards.
Chairman, I'd like you to accept electronic, um, participation from Ben Edwards.
Seven. You're all in favor?
Aye.
You can do those. All right. We don't want to get out. Senator Edwards, can you unmute yourself, please? Mr. Edwards, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Again now.
Okay, something was going on, but I...
All right, now it's your turn. We can move forward. Mr. Edwards, what can you call the board for this?
Mr. Hodges.
Brother.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Edwards?
Aye. Yes.
Here.
Ms. Robinson, here.
Ms. Van Croft, here.
And for the review and adoption of the meeting agenda, is there any matters to change or discuss?
Um, yes Chairman Catlett, I would like to make a few changes, um, under view business. I would like to add item 12A, Resolution 25 dash 36, preparation of funds, of additional funds for FR 25 to CSA. And also, I would like to add a closed session this evening for a interrover on personnel matter. Change of time.
All right, the motion is up second.
Mr. Ed.
All in favor, staff?
Aye.
As a meeting.
As a meeting, yes. Uh, at this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Joshua Lewis from Jerusalem Christian Church up to give our application.
Evening, sir. Well, good evening. Uh, thank you for making space, uh, for this moment of prayer before we begin. I'm honored to be here representing the Church of our pastor Jerusalem Christian Church. And I would love for, uh, everyone to be invited and join me in a word of prayer this evening. Father, we thank you this evening for the gift of life. Help us in this moment to see each day, even this very moment, every breath as a gift. The good times and the tough ones. We're reminded through the brutal slaying of two Virginia Beach police officers that our first responders are constantly putting their lives at risk to serve and protect our community. We ask that you will be with those families. God, we ask you in this community to protect and cover our fire chief, Ronald Brown, his staff, all of our volunteers across the county. We ask you to keep your hand on Sheriff Lumpkin and all of the officers that patrol our roads, respond to our calls, and keep us safe. And for our community that we deeply care about, we ask tonight your special blessings over. We pray for our school superintendent, Dr. Wagner, all of our schools, the cafeteria staff, the class aides, the teachers and the bus drivers. Bless our children. And may we as a community protect them and help them to thrive and be all that you have for them to be. God, we ask tonight for your blessings over the finances of King William. Help our businesses thrive, help our farms to grow, our residents to care for one another. God, may we properly manage the resources you've entrusted us with wisdom and care. Help our churches, all of them, to make an impact in this community and the world. And God bless our Board of Supervisors tonight. Be with Ms. Robinson, Ms. Van Croft, Mr. Edwards, Mr. Catlett, Mr. Hodges, as they navigate the affairs of King William and the business set before them. God, I ask you to give them wisdom, patience, and courage to do what is right, not what is easy. And Father, we thank you tonight collectively for calling us to this small, beautiful place that we call home. God, help us, by the power of your Holy Spirit, to do all that we can to lift it up, to invest in it, and come together to ensure that future generations are left with something that is alive and well. Our hearts belong to you, God. We pray all of this in the name of our Lord Jesus the Christ. Amen.
I'd like to invite everybody to able to stand and join in the closing reading. Like to leave.
To the Father, the United States of America, and to the brotherly, religious saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we move on to the next items of our continuing agenda. Is there any comments or discussions to be considered, gentlemen?
A second.
Yeah, got to make one second. All in favor?
Aye.
You can do those. All right. All right, you're going to lead the meeting. Uh, let this wolf up. So you go into our fourth hearing. This will be for the rezoning, uh, Z dash zero two dash two zero two four.
Good evening, Chairman Catlett and members of the Core Joyce Wolf of the Planning Department. I'm here to present the, um, public hearing cases this evening. The first one on your agenda. Okay, the first item on your agenda tonight, uh, first public hearing is a rezoning request by the Redson companies. Uh, this is a request to rezone a portion of tax map 11 dash 86, um, 3.86 acres of that tax parcel from agricultural conversation conservation to be one local business for proposed Dollar General Market store. The surrounding uses are rural dwellings, Broadus Memorial Baptist Church, Navy and Fire Department, and a substation, electric substation. The area is currently all zoned agricultural conservation. There is, uh, one commercial zoning, um, uh, a little bit further west on King William Road, and there's some rural residential zoning to the east, um, off of Route 30. The future land use map designates this area as agricultural conservation, uh, and some rural residential to the north or to the northwest. Um, and that is the only, um, only areas other than agricultural conservation. There's some public, um, areas as well. There are three Dollar Generals, uh, nearby this location. The first, the closest, is approximately seven miles from this site. It's in Caroline County, and it is the, uh, standard, uh, model of the Dollar General store, not the market. The other is nine miles away at, uh, Central Barrage. It is also the standard version of the Dollar General store. And the other one in King William is 13.4 miles away, which is also the standard, not market version. This is the conceptual site plan that has been proffered by the applicant. It shows, um, buffers along Route 30 and Dabney's Mill would be sole entrance coming off of Dabney's Mill Road and then parking in the building. Um, it has a BMP, a stormwater management location, and the transmission line, the power transmission line, as you can see going through the site. Uh, this is, these are the proper conceptual elevations for the DG Market Store. Pretty standard to what you've, um, probably seen at other locations, and there's signage as well. Um, and this is the area that, um, we'll talk about a little bit later, the narrow taper lane turning onto Dabney's Mill Road. And these are the proffers that were submitted, um, today, uh, the final set anyway, uh, today by the applicant, um, who is also here and would like to make a brief presentation. Without reading through all of these, um, I will say that, uh, they have proffered substantial conformance with the concept plan that we looked at earlier. They have, um, proffered substantial compliance with the elevation. They have proffered landscape buffers along the street fromage of Route 30 and, um, Dabney's Mill. They have proffered that the uses would be restricted to general retail, neighborhood convenience store, and any accessory uses to those. The, um, they have also proffered out, uh, they've proffered no sale of alcoholic beverages at this location. They've proffered that the balance of the area would remain agricultural and open vacant. They have proffered the hours of operation to be 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And they have proffered trash and recycling areas, including cardboard recycling containers would be screened using appropriate combination of fencing or masoning walls, and that's, um, language directly from our ordinance. And the other screening would be provided in accordance with that one ordinance as well. The applicant is also proffered that they would not permit deliveries to the property from delivery trucks that are classified larger than an intermediate semi-trailer. And then last, they have proffered at the time of site plan review, if a right with turn lane is determined to be warranted solely due to the impacts attributable to this site, they would construct a right turn lane within the existing King William Road rightway at the intersection of Dabney's Mill. And as I said before, the applicants here would like to make a presentation, but I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, please, Bill?
Now, when I first heard it, I thought it was a regular one, and I was like, is Lord, we got enough there?
But there's no questions for the applicants who want to do this presentation? But there's no questions for this board of applicants who want to do this presentation?
We, the chair members of board, I'm Matt Roberts, personal attorney of Virginia, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. Thank you all so much for having us while Joyce goes ahead and gets our presentation up and running. As she mentioned, we're here tonight to talk about a rezoning application for a Dollar General Market store, which Retsin Companies has filed. A little bit of background about Retsin, out of North Carolina, they operate as the landlord for a variety of retailers across the eastern part of the United States, among others Dollar General and the types of formats that Dollar General puts together. So when this application came before the planning commission, this is a little bit before my time with Retsin Companies, you know, came before the planning commission with a number of issues that got identified both by the community and the planning commission. And so we've made a number of updates since that time, many of which Joyce has already mentioned, so I hope they run through things a lot faster. We also held a community meeting on February tenth to go over some of those changes and get some additional feedback from the community, and I've since made additional updates that Joyce mentioned to you, I'd like to go through as well for you tonight. So Joyce has already oriented you to the site, so I won't belabor it. Obviously, we're at the intersection there, King William Road, Dabney's Mill Road. You have the surrounding uses, including the church, the fire department across the street, and some of our residential neighbors and the substation on the south side. As Joyce mentioned, the site is, you know, over eight acres in total. We've got furniture on those streets, and as we'll talk about a little bit, you know, the access will not be off of King William Road for very obvious reasons. But part of the reason we chose this site, it may seem sort of like an odd place to put the Dollar General Market, but really, when, you know, Retsin goes out and tries to cite these types of things, they're looking for spots where they can add value in the communities where they're operating. And in particular for this site, you know, it's an opportunity to supply retail and food options in a place where not as many exist as we may like. As you probably know, the nearest grocery stores are almost nine miles away, at the food line in Central Garage. So initially, it was proposed that the entire eight point seven acres would be rezoned to the B one district for the Dollar General Market store. At that time, there were no proffers associated with the site or other use restrictions. You know, nothing really committed what was going on out there. And so we took those comments and the concerns that we heard of the planning commission in that community meeting very seriously, and looked at what we could do with the site. As I mentioned, we've made a bunch of changes as a result of those meetings. This is the proposed plan, as Joyce was showing it to you. Now, it may not look terribly different from what I did show you a moment ago, but I can tell you that there are a number of changes in this plan. Again, Joyce has mentioned many of these, so I'll be brief. But the first is that we have reused the rezoning area substantially down to three point eight acres, more or less. And that's really the area that's necessary for the Dollar General Market itself. We leave the remainder, four point eight acres of the site undeveloped, undisturbed, in its natural state. We also added additional buffers up along the King William Road frontage, and that's to basically meet the county's business management standards, which Joyce had put us onto, and we took a look at, and were able to definitely accommodate, and then keeping the same buffers as you're running around to Dabney's Mill. Now, you'll know, you do have to deal with a number of power lines along the site, but we do have approval from REC to plant and arrive to trees and shrubs and things such as that beneath those power lines. So, you know, what you see here is what's intended to be planted. And then at the rear of the site, you'll notice a couple additional trees and shrubs that weren't there before. We had noticed that we had misdespatched the back for the landscaping, so we had additional landscaping and buffering up against our residential neighbors there. But it's important to note the remainder of that tree area along the southern part of the property, along Dabney's Mill, will be set to remain to have that existing vegetation act with the screening. Things that haven't changed, the access will still be off of Dabney's Mill Road instead of King William Road. Obviously, given the situation out there on King William Road today, especially as we heard from staff and citizens, we have quite a bit going on out there in terms of traffic. It certainly does not make sense to us to put a commercial retail access off of that point, and so we put it off of Dabney's. Similarly, you know, this is not going to be any bigger. It's still a little over ten and a half thousand square feet. What you'll notice, if you are, you know, looking in on the site there, you'll notice that we are exceeding all the setbacks from the roads, neighboring properties such as that, and meeting all the onsite parking departments. This is just to show that B dot has done a preliminary review of the site entrances. They have agreed with the spacing that we provided on Dabney's Mill Road. They've said that no right turn lane is needed into the site. Get back to the Dabney's Mill Road frontage, I'm sorry, King William Road frontage in just a moment. So unlike the other Dollar Generals in the area, this is, as we've mentioned, going to be a Dollar General Market store. It will be fairly standard in terms of the architecture and materials and such as that. I'd also point out that this building is not going to be over twenty feet high. So, you know, given the screening and such as that, you know, the building height in and of itself, it'll be very well screened from certain properties. The buffers are incredibly important to us, and so I wanted to just give a quick sense of what is going to be planted out there. Part of that King William Road frontage is going to be a mixture of understory trees and shrubs, including the dogwoods, apple syrup, berry trees, and such as that. And then as King William Road starts to transition to Dabney's Mill, you start adding in some of those evergreens and deciduous trees, and then at the rear, again, a mix of the existing deciduous and evergreens that's going to stay there, but adding in more of those understory trees and shrubs in the gaps that identify. So Joyce has gone through our proffers, but again, the original submission did not come, you know, to the planning commission with proffers, so that left open quite a lot of questions about, you know, what would happen if it was B one. And then what we want to do is add a number of proffers with a resubmission and such data since the community. So as Joyce mentioned, we're proffering to the plan and the elevations that we saw. What that basically means is what you see is what you get. The buffers, we do them as shown on the plan, and then we've also proffered to restrict uses in regard to what's necessary to operate the Dollar General Market. And that's important, you know, in our minds, because when you combine that with the elevations and the concept plan, this has to be a Dollar General Market. If somebody wanted to do something else here, they'd have to come back to this board to do something different. I think it's also important because a Dollar General Market is different than your standard Dollar General in a number of ways, primarily in the food choices that it's going to be offered. So they have typically Dollar General goods, but there's also a variety of food options there as well. I think that starts to address a lot of the comments and petitions that the planning commission about the nature of the store and the things that we heard. As Joyce mentioned, we understood that alcohol sales were very important to the community in understanding what was going to happen there. We had a discussion with Dollar General and have proffered out alcohol sales at this location. Alcohol sales cannot occur here. Again, I think that directly addresses some of the things you saw in the petitions that the planning commission as well. Again, the remainder of the site won't be developed. It will stay in its current state. And again, if somebody wanted to do something different there, they would have to come back and walk through Retsin, but if they did, they'd be coming back to this board to ask for different provisions. We've proffered to the hours of operations that the community can understand when this building is going to open. And then based on the community feedback we got at the community meeting, we've done a couple other things, including proffering to keep all the trash and recycling areas within enclosure. So zoning ordinance permits a variety of either landscaping, fencing, masonry wall, some combination of those things. We've taken out the landscaping and said strictly this is going to be an enclosure. So fence, masonry is something that we determine at the time of site plan, okay? And then given the traffic concerns that we heard, we also proffered to limit the truck sizes, as we said. And then today, with some discussion with Joyce, also proffered to, if it's identified at the time of site plan that a right turn lane is warranted by the project on King William Road, we'll construct that as well. So that'll be a conversation with B dot staff and such as that at site point. And just to give a sense of why, you know, the truck turns and limiting the size of the trucks seems important to us, the size of a WB forty truck is substantially smaller than a standard truck that might otherwise be coming to the site. So a WB forty is going to be about forty-five feet long, nose to tail, give or take, whereas the more standard truck, like a WB sixty-seven, is going to be closer to seventy-five feet long. And so from our perspective, proffering to the smaller truck, we control the traffic, you know, with Dollar General. Proffering to that smaller truck really helps deal with some of the concerns we heard about, you know, existing traffic and existing vehicular traffic on King William Road. Smaller trucks are going to have smaller turning radius, they can move faster. It's less of an opportunity for any issues given all the existing background traffic that seems to be out there on King William Road. Another sort of concept here is the plan would be to remove at that intersection the trees that you're seeing there. And so as you're coming around the bend from King William Road into Dabney's Mill, you have sort of a hazardous condition with the sight line for vehicles getting in and out or blocked. And so we've talked with B dot about that, and now approved us if this moves forward to go ahead and remove those trees. So that's another added benefit for traffic along King William Road. So I'm coming up on the end here, and I appreciate all indulging. But again, why put a Dollar General Market here? Again, as I said earlier, part of the reason is there's a lack of similar retail and food options in this area. So we see an opportunity to fill a need in the community with things like everyday goods and groceries. Now, food options at Dollar General and Dollar General Markets are wide, but Dollar General Markets are going to be wider. So that'll include things like canned goods, fresh produce, refrigerated foods, frozen foods, meats, dairy, things such as that. And then on top of that, you have the underlying things that get sold at Dollar General, typical household goods, home cleaning supplies, housewares, clothing, things such as that. We also think adding a Dollar General Market is going to be good for the county. It adds jobs, and it adds to the commercial tax revenue that the county generates and benefits from. That's a direct benefit as well for citizens, because that's money that is not coming out of the residential tax base. And when I say jobs, that's not only permanent jobs at the site, also construction jobs that get generated as the building gets built. And then last thing, we would just note that Dollar General does have a good track record of partnering with the communities in which it operates. They operate a literacy foundation, which provides grants each year for local literacy programs. And they also partner with Food America to provide meals for those in need. So in summary, we've done quite a lot of changes since this got to the planning commission. I think we've tried to address comments that we've heard to the best of our ability and there will be a couple above and beyond where this thing started. So with that, we look forward to questions you all might have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Rob? All right, we'll open this up for public hearing.
Colleen Williams. Good afternoon. My name is Colleen Williams. I'm a resident of the fifth district, neighbor of it. I strongly oppose this application for rezoning. You've answered things about the size of trucks and the construction of a turning lane and all. And in the presentation that I attended, there were four dogs, a five months, and one baby. Well, the store would have some fresh vegetables and meat items. When it comes to fresh meat, they said the meat would probably be packed deli, chicken breasts, or hamburger. Fresh meat is meat that bleeds with blood, not dark brown or gray liquid. As far as having berries and bananas, and I think they said something about tomatoes. There's no meat that brings vegetables. And then, to go on, conditions within the stores and trash storage on the outside, cleanliness, presence of rodents, safety hazards, and limited staffing. The three stores that currently exist in this area within ten to thirteen miles on either side of the intersection have problems with lack of cleanliness inside. Items stacked almost to the ceilings blocking aisles, exposed trash on the outside of buildings, which can attract rodents, and limited numbers of employees at any given time all impact the condition of any fresh food that may be for sale. High employee turnover due to low pay and poor working conditions have impacted conditions in the stores themselves. Former employees have reported the presence, the presence of rodents within the stores also. I did extensive research on the existence of Dollar General markets and Dollar General stores. Having only three or less employees at a given time who must stock the shelves, clean the store, and operate the cash register makes the stores attracted to crime. It is noted that forty-nine people have been killed in Dollar General stores since 2014. Sparsely staffed stores, sometimes with only a single worker manning the register, and the lack of security guards or staffers at entrances contribute to attracting crime, robbery, and theft. Concerns about conditions at Dollar General stores have been mounting for a while. OSHA inspectors found critical safety issues that included blocked and flooded aisles, unsafe storage, unsanitary conditions, obstructive access, lack of access to electrical panels, inaccessible fire extinguishes, and unmarked killers. Officials say that these conditions not only create an unsafe workplace for employees, but that they are also put shoppers at risk. OSHA has cited Dollar General for hundreds of violations related to ongoing hazards and fined them close to twenty-one million dollars, as reported in Business Insider on July seventeen, twenty twenty-three. As a result, Dollar General recently became the first and only national retailer to be added to the labor department's severe violation list, which covers the companies that have failed with its dangerous conditions despite receiving long citations. OSHA's severe violation enforcement program devotes agency resources to employers cited for will for repeated or failure to evade violations and for showing indifference to provide a safe and healthy workplace. I don't think we want that in our community. There are enough Dollar General stores, and we just don't need it. And I strongly oppose this application, and I wish that you would give considerations to what I have said, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frances Wapley. Good evening, everyone. My name is Frances Wapley, and I live in the fifth district, and I am a concerned citizen here tonight to speak in opposition of the application from Retsin Company to rezonate tax map eleven eighty-six, Z zero two, twenty twenty-four, from residential to business. This area is all residential with many homes surrounding it. The planning commission denied this application for rezoning to build a Dollar General store on King William Road where residents spoke to the dangerous travel and the accidents on Dabney's Mill Road and King William Road. Many residents spoke in opposition to this. Yet we are here tonight before the board of supervisors for the same rezoning application from this Retsin company. In fact, we have another business less than one mile away, which offers alcohol products, tobacco products, and lottery tickets, et cetera. The citizens of this district know what they need and do not, and do not, they know what they need and then know what they do not need in this area. Please, give us a business that is going to offer fresh fruit, fresh vegetables, fresh meat. Okay, we don't have enough workers in the Dollar General stores that we already have in this county. The aisles are crowded with boxes. We have long checkout lines. There's no one to assist you. And I hope that this board will take into consideration the wishes of our citizens concerning this rezoning for the Dollar General store. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tiffany Garland. Hello, my name is Tiffany Garland, and I live in District Five. District Five is marked as a historic district. As far as I know, Dollar General's founders and their current CEO are not from our district. Therefore, their presence is unnecessary to our continued history. Secondly, I've heard the updates that have Secondly, I've heard the updates that have been offered to help with the traffic and I'm not convinced it will help for any business I would attempt to set up in that quarter. With all of the changes, it would likely be a disadvantage to the Dollar General for their long-term business with taking down trees and adding trees for coverage when the business closes and fails because there are literally Dollar General this way and that way, less than 45 miles. Who's going to tear it down and restore what was already there? It's not necessary. Three, there would now be a presence of a business that could have burgaries. I personally watch my nieces and nephews there. I am about two houses down, three driveways down in the curb. We use the yard. We go on our walks in the yard. I would be very uneasy if a stranger came up the street while I have the children out of the yard. That is not currently present, that danger, I mean. Finally, if you're asking the community if we want it, it's a no. I have lived off Dabney's Mill Road since I was around 10, so that's around 1995. We do not want or have a need for a grocery store any closer than we are in half. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Taylor Garland.
Good evening. I'm Taylor Garland and I live in the fifth district. And I'd like to say ditto to all the things that's already been said. I don't understand why we're here again. We came down, we stated our reasons for it. I live on Dabney's Mill and right now, I don't know how they can get VDOT to remove the trees. I've got trees in that curb that they spent, I want to be in dollars, whatever it was to straighten out the curb. They let the trees grow back into the curb. I now have a couple of them laying over my mailbox with people coming around the curb. I begged them three years to get that cut back and they came through there and cut it one time. This past summer, they cut a path that I could have done more with my zero turn than they did with the big tractor. So safety is a big part of it. My grandkids live there. I've lived there all my life. I grew up there with my grandparents. We do not want it rezoned for this business. As far as I'm concerned, they took a pig and put different lipstick on it and brought it back to us. And we just flat out don't want it. And the same thing I'll say again. Would y'all want a Dollar General in your backyard or next to your house? That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pat Garlick. I'm the wife of this man and I also live in the fifth district. First off, when we had meeting last time, my last quote was, what was on the, the comprehensive planning? It said, there was a quote on it that was taken from a survey that said, build up the businesses on the corridor 360. So somebody chose that quote, put it on your comprehensive plan. There was a reason and we, I checked this comprehensive plan several times throughout my, been there since 93. If that's what y'all, if y'all want to build that corridor up, keep that corridor there. And if I walk to the bottom of my driveway and look to the left, I will be able to see that entrance to the Dollar, Dollar General market. But if I walked across the road to my mailbox and turn around, I can't see a thing because of that curb. That road is 40 miles per hour at the stop sign, but it's, it goes down immediately to 35 in my curb. Now, if you want to make some revenue, put a policeman in my driveway and get some ticket money off the people who speed on that road. You have a road that's zoned for 35, people are doing 55. You have a road on King William that is zoned for 55, people are doing 65, 70. Putting in a turn lane, putting up trees is not going to slow down that traffic. We do not need it. We live in a country, we live in country, rural. The petition we did for the last meeting, we got 60 people to sign their petition in two days. We turned that in and most of those, half of those houses were probably built in the last five years. And most of the comments were, if we wanted to be near congestion again, we want to move the city to the country. So don't congest it again. Do not build it up. My last concern is the person who is selling the property, I have never met them, but they have that corner there. They do not live in this area. As far as I see, they live in DC. But that same person has property across the road, 30 acres, I think. So am I going to have to come back in two years because somebody wants to put a Wendy's there? Two years after there because somebody wants to put a Walgreens there? So if you open that door, am I going to be here every two years? That's all I'm saying. All the words spoken tonight, most important four words are, we do not want it. Thank you.
Gary Hill.
Will you forgive me for a second? Can I say this?
Want to give a mic?
Thank you. My name is Gary Hill. I have lived there for the last 35 years. The old house there is my great, great grandmother. And I was able to accomplish it at 31 acres. They were, this Dollar General would be right next to my property with that old boy. Cause there's a little boy, I grew up there, I'm 71 years old now. And I don't walk that road many a day and I love the serenity of the country. This Pat was talking about how the road, people speeding that road, if you know anything but NASCAR, you can go in a circle in an embankment faster than you can go on flat land. And that's the way that, that road is. When you go around that curb, it's up the embankment. And you can get, you know, because I like to drive fast. I can't even. And the same way coming off Route, Route 30 is a turbo embankment where the church is. I mean, if you leave the church and trying to come across, get on Dabney's Mill Road. I mean, you struggle to get across it because it's a real slant embankment. And, and cars becoming pretty fast. Also, Dollar General, my wife shot that Dollar General for the late, the, the late, the night coffee creamer. And did real good in coffee, but she got one that was, was already got curls in it. So she's lost about 4,050 right there. So. And all the stores that I've been into, they always say so private. They, they have a lot of merchandise, but it's not on the shelf. It's in crates. And then you can't get around on the aisles, you know, and I need a, need a lot of running to get around myself. But nevertheless, I'm not in for it. And I think there's places that they could put it up further. There's already being for a commercial business in King William. If they need to have one there, but that's not the right area to put one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anthony Cantrell.
Last time I was here, I talked a lot about how it really feels to have the Dollar General come to this area. Tonight, I actually want to talk a little bit more about facts. Oh yeah, I mean, I think Cantrell in District Four. And, and I want to talk about first, as I went to the meeting, the last meeting that they had where they listened to our questions, I had a lot of concerns. I wanted to understand what they would do for our community. I wanted to understand what type of wages they would pay. They didn't have any answers for those. They, they put up on the screen, they do great things for communities and they work with Food America and all of these things. But they couldn't tell me if they were going to pay a living wage to people there after they put other grocery stores out of business. So it made me more concerned and, and really today, I think we're here because we're at a critical, you know, juncture where this isn't really just a decision about Dollar General, it's a decision about what type of community we want to have in this area. And so I want to give you the facts. I got four pieces of reading material for you all here that I'll leave with you. The first one is a, a list of 18 states and 82 towns or local jurisdictions that have regulated Dollar General from spreading further and further within the communities. And there's a lot of reason that these states are doing this and these local communities are doing this. And now I'm going to talk to you about these three other pieces of research. One is a, a title, the Dollar, the Dollar General Invasion by the local self reliance, the Institute for Local Self Reliance. The other one is from our own government, the United States Department of Agriculture. And the last one is a Cornell study by a doctor at Cornell University. So the first piece around the ILSR shows really a history of destruction in the path to Dollar General. We're talking about thousands of independent pharmacies and bookstores and grocery stores and other local businesses that were wiped out by the chain store competition. And this isn't just a natural evolution in the way it should be. It's a deliberate strategy where they target rural communities. They, it exposed, exposed a lot of predatory pricing. Dollar Generals have been sued by multiple alternative generals because they come in, they undercut local businesses, local businesses go away and then they raise their price. And then basically everything that was advertised goes up in price and it's a predatory way, a bait and switch, as you would call it, to, to basically take that money and they don't put that back in our communities. They take that and it goes to their corporate profits, right? And so then they limit our choices. They, they talk about the, the products that they have and, you know, all the different things they have. But all of our independent locally owned stores have that. We have, we have a Prove Stand that's been, Thomas has been there for 20 years, right down the road in District Four. And then they drain our local economy, right? They, all that money flows out of town and they target the vulnerable communities. Now let me talk about the USDA, our own government's research. Their findings are even more specific. And frankly, they're actually even more alarming. What they show is that there's a significant increase in rural areas that local grocery stores will close down, which actually limits your ability to have fresh produce, milk and dairy and all of these things. Jobs actually disappear. The USDA shows that employment in grocery stores, not only do they drop, but when a dollar store arrives, it's 2.5 more times that unemployment goes up in those areas. Sales actually plummet in local communities. And we, we also see double decline in rural areas than we do urban areas. This isn't a temporary blip. The USA data, USDA data shows that these negative impacts on rural grocery stores are long lasting and they actually never recover. It all adds up to a pretty real risk. They acknowledge that this, the nutritional value that comes from Dollar General is actually worse. Which is actually what the Cornell study is about. It's, it took all of the items that Dollar General sells and actually looked at the nutritional value. And I actually have a chart on here. And so they're talking about the products and they'll have fresh produce, but what the, what the study found was that only 1% of what they have on the shelves is fresh protein foods. Only 2% are, are veggie and fruit. 20% were sugary snacks, 20% were sugary beverages. So yeah, they're going to have a variety of things that keep us unhealthy, right? So I think it's really important that we talk about this, not just being numbers on a page, but this being about our community. And I think we have a choice to make. We can either choose to stay local, choose to support local, or we can choose to send our money out to a corporation that makes decisions in a boardroom 100 miles away.
All right, I think that's the last statement for this public hearing. So we'll have a closed public hearing. Any questions? Your audience from your board? No questions? Comments? I hear them and I vote yes. Good there, yes. Mr. Edwards, can you hear us? Do you have any questions or comments?
I've heard a lot of pros and cons about both sides of this thing, but from what's being said tonight, most of the community that bothered to show up doesn't want it. So I guess I'll stay with my notebook.
You know, I like the idea of, of the market. I wish they'd done that at the one just down the street. I don't understand why that didn't happen there. I mean, can that still happen? Can they convert that to a market one? But, you know, I'm a lifelong district, you know, representative and I'm a y'all, I'm sorry, that's a big. Thank you so much for showing up and, and sharing your words and your thoughts. And I already did read a bunch of you all's letters that you all had submitted. So I was very appreciative of that to know how you brought people.
Ms. Wolf, can, I may have missed it. Can you tell me what was the, the recommendation from the planning commission?
The planning commission, commission voted unanimously to recommend denying.
Deny.
Did not, yeah?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I'll just say, I've kind of been back and forth on this issue since it kind of attended the planning commission meeting. I see a lot of familiar faces that are back here tonight to speak. And in the same token, Dollar General or resting companies has answered a ton of questions that maybe didn't completely solve problem, but they gave it a really good shot to try to, you know, come to the middle and make things work. So I appreciate them for all of their, you know, hard work and effort into their presentation and what they've done. You know, I liked the idea of a Dollar General market. I think, you know, all I've heard since I took office was this county needs another grocery store. We need more options for food and, you know, in the county. And I hear you loud and clear. Completely understand that. Can't say we have not, as a board, been looking at options to bring something like that else to the county. And it would be a revenue builder for the county. That's something that, same token, I've, I've kind of looked at many different angles, but sadly, you know, I, I hear y'all's concerns and, and I get it and, you know, I just don't know if that's the right fit for our county right at the moment in that area. So.
I want to turn the motion.
Oh, I've made the motion that we deny the rezoning application for the.
First and second.
Dr. Rogers.
Okay, I thought you said my name. Well, in favor of not approving.
Ms. Reddick.
I'm in favor of not approving.
Ms. Robinson.
Okay, for not approving, aye.
You gotta be careful with that answer.
The motion was to deny the rezoning application. Ms. Pankoff, aye. Mr. Campbell, check.
Aye.
All right. So you want, just hold your back up. This will be a public hearing on C P 04-2022.
The next public hearing on your agenda is a conditional use permit 4-2022. This is Mark Baker, Irondale, Virginia LLC. This is a request for a conditional use permit to allow multifamily dwellings, apartments in R1 district. This site is located on King William Road, just north of Central Crossing and across from the, the King William Rec Center. The proposal is for 159 apartments, a clubhouse and parking, public water and sewers available and it is surrounded by single-family residential, we call it Park and Central Crossing, multifamily residential, which are the carriage homes to the north and King William Place and King William Manor apartments to the east. Our current zoning map, which is up on the screen, shows this, pretty much the entire area is R1 except for down in the intersection of Route 30 and 360, which is business. And then up to the north, a little bit further, there are some rural residential properties. The future land use map from our comprehensive plan designates this property as commercial. So B1 or B2 uses would be appropriate according to our comprehensive plan. The surrounding area would be medium density residential, public, which is the park and. and mixed-use plan unit development, which is the orchards. The proposed site plan shows a one building in an L shape that is three stories. It also shows a clubhouse and pool area and a green space for the proposed former mansion in that front area. And the rest, the balance, would be parking and/or wooded areas around the site. This is a close-up of the proposed site plan, showing the buffer area between it and Central Crossing that's been proposed by the applicant. These are the elevations for the apartment building and the color, the palette up above. In summary, these apartments are, our apartments would be permitted in the R1 District with conditional use permit. The surrounding area has been developed as high-density residential. The property does have access to public water and sewer. And the goal of the comprehensive plan has been to facilitate and permit safe, quality and diverse housing options. The applicant is proposing 159 apartments, 145 of those would be one bedroom. As a comparison, King William Place across the street has 12 total one-bedroom units and King William Manor has no one bedrooms. They're all two-bedroom. The applicant has been responsive to adjacent owner concerns, having a couple of meetings and adjusting the building layout orientation, providing site fencing and landscape screening. The applicant has proposed to agree to additional conditions as well regarding emergency management, planning, lighting and screening. These are a little bit small, but the planning commission did vote two to two with one member abstaining on a motion to deny the application without a majority vote. Per their bylaws, the motion failed and the request has been forwarded to you with no recommendation. Should the board vote to approve the request, staff would recommend the below conditions, including numbers four through six that were proposed by the applicant. The first would be development of the property in substantial conformity with their concept plan, substantial conformity with the building elevations that were submitted and that the six-foot perimeter fencing referenced on the conceptual plan would be of vinyl material. The applicant has proposed conditions four through six, including emergency planning, that they would submit a health, life and safety incident response plan at the time of site plan for review and approval by the planning department and the fire chief. That would include a fire and incident preparedness plan, incident communications plan, emergency response command level meeting checklist, emergency response staffing checklist, a resident training and education checklist, an evacuation plan checklist. And the plans submitted, the site plan and building permit review would conform to the applicable county code and the commercially reasonable best practices to mitigate any safety risks that were identified at the time of submission. And relating to the staffing and equipment status of the then applicable local emergency responsive authorities. So all of that would be in coordination with Chief Brown and his staff during the site plan stage. In addition to the lighting standards that we have in our ordinance, the applicant is proposing accepting a condition that would be, that would state the maximum height of the exterior lighting would not exceed 15 feet measured from the ground to the light source. Any pedestrian baller hams would be mounted no higher than 4 feet above grade. Any lighting visible from adjacent properties would be designated and located so that the maximum illumination would obviously have a foot handle of property line, which is standard light pollution standard of level. And at the interior of the proposed tree line, they would not exceed, I'm sorry, it not exceed five, half a foot handle of proposed tree line, not property line, as depicted on the conceptual site plan. So that's in the interior, not the exterior property line. And screening, they've suggested that prior to the issuance of a CO, the developer would provide written notice to the owners of budding property within the Central Crossing subdivision. And at the request of the homeowners made within 30 days of mailing and subject to the approval of those homeowners made within 30 days of the mailing and subject to the approval of the planning department, the developer would locate portions of the six-foot evergreen plantings in alternative locations specified by the homeowners in order to provide maximum screening. So they want to coordinate with the adjacent homeowners to make the impact of the screening as much as possible so that it would protect them. To the extent that any of the evergreen plantings are requested to be located on those private property owners lots, then the homeowners will acknowledge in writing, or they would have homeowners acknowledge in writing, that they would assume no obligation for maintenance, ongoing maintenance. That's all I have. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. And I believe our applicant is here tonight also with a presentation.
How many residents do we have for food right now? That haven't even started, do you have an idea?
I don't have the exact number, but. Yes, probably that would be close. I've heard 1500. I haven't put them down on paper, I guess. And that would, this came in in 2022. So this has been in the process for quite a while.
Is there any questions from this panel? Thank you, Dave. Your presentation.
Me, me. I'm sorry.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. This chairman, members of the board, Mark Baker, they're the resources. I'm here on behalf of the property owner. Appreciate this for a little meeting, which allows us to do what we need to do in terms of putting together some additional conditions and choices to describe. As I pull that up, my initial slide, really quite frankly, wanted to talk about property location. Also wanted to talk about the current zoning in the comprehensive plan as well. So again, having also done a good job with that, I'll probably just speed to the second slide. We haven't had it for a little while. You can see the recent, in fact, is the 2022 number. Application was filed in 2022. There we go. Right past that one. And so this is where we started. The goal was to commit the construction of a multifamily dwelling development. Those were accessory parking, residential amenities, ones that, one that would have been market rate, so it would have been falling. This was presented to the planning commission twice in 2023, in two rounds. Initial design, the one you see here, you know, it ended up being problematic. Quite frankly, that was one of the reasons for the delay that we've seen here. Site plan did show five buildings. There were three stories each. There were 36 units, each one of those buildings, 180 total units. Apple parking was distributed throughout the site, but based on that layout, it wasn't as efficient as it could have been. The buildings ultimately got pushed towards the exterior of the site and were closer to neighboring properties. You know, as a result, we also, during that, for initial review, were in a situation where the fire marshal asked for, rather, the fire chief asked for access around the buildings as well. And so that called into question the adequacy of the buffers that ultimately became the discussion at planning commission. Some of the design for additional screening, fencing, proposed. How our design just felt too compressed around the exterior of the site, trying to put in a building, fire access along with maintaining this buffer. And that concern was heightened along that southern property line, which is at the bottom of the site. We had a number of property owners that came out for such a crossing, had some concerns about buffering the impact of the buildings. So we ultimately tabled the request and were to evaluate concerns further and to think about potential impacts and how they could be reduced. We did come back in 2024 with a substantial redesign. A fellow engaged local architect, local arts architect, one of the most accomplished firms in central Virginia, really in terms of this use, even more than anyone. And the intent then was a high-quality, more compact design, one that's more respectful design, one that's more respectful of geography, and one that as a result is more respectful to the property owners. We went from a five-building design to a more efficient, single-building design. We reduced the count from 180 to 159 units, so the reduction in density. We did maintain a majority one-bedroom approach, which Joyce mentioned. We retained the amenities, we were able to do that despite losing the density, the clubhouse and the pool. More importantly, the owner condition, I actually had a topographic survey performed. And so that, in that way, the design can more respectfully respond to the existing topography on the site. Incorporating the units into a single building makes for a more compact design, one that allows for greater building setbacks, again, for neighbors. One that minimizes grading and one that really gives a much better sense in buffer areas, the extent to which the existing vegetation can be maintained. And then finally, the building shape is an L, further shields neighbors, again, particularly to the south, who will be heard from throughout our meetings, from any activities that might take place at that clubhouse or possibly building in itself in addition to screening and buffering as, as the termination. So the improvements include certainly a better overall architectural design, as you'll see, better site plan in terms of design, but also, you know, more specifically, greater setback, greater buffering, the ability to retain vegetation within those buffers. And then we do still keep the double row of evergreen trees along the buffer and we keep the opaque fence, both of which are located inside of that buffer. And just to demonstrate what we're talking about, if we do focus along that southern property line along Central Crossing, if you look at the building location, the original buildings, there were two buildings along that property line. They were parallel to the property line, they were both set back only to 69 feet. With the new plan, the southernmost corner of the building, you see there, is now 103 feet, so significantly further away from adjacent property. And again, that's just the corner, the majority of the buildings technically set back for it. When you get to the buffer, again, that natural tree line that showed along that property line, the original layout showed approximately 40 feet, it was in a straight line along the entirety of that property line. The new plan, again, there was some question as to what extent with our access road and, you know, things we need to accomplish with that original plan, whether that could truly be kept in an undisturbed status. So we've been able to, with the new plan, increase that. We're now showing a minimum of 65 feet or more. And most, in most areas, we're certainly guaranteeing that 40 feet. And we better understand the site grading, retaining of it as undisturbed. So it's a much more defined, it's a more robust, it's a better buffer than was included in the original request. And then again, we still have the opaque fence and the double row of evergreen trees for the screen for the site, for residential properties. Those are things that we had added in the first request because we worried about quality buffering. We've increased the quality of buffering, increased the setback, and now we've retained those as well. In terms of access to the site, and I would just say that we have gone through a review of VDOT. The access is only to King William Road. It's via double, a rather single divided entrance. Access is only proposed from King William Road. There'd be no access to adjacent neighborhoods. It's worth noting that VDOT did review and prove, request this does reflect the requirements of the, or the suggestions of the traffic impact now, as well as VDOT conditions. So design is fully compliant with, so we don't want to see TIA. In terms of architecture, elevations are shown here, and they're intended to set the tone for the project in terms of design, one quality. Design is somewhat modern, but it does utilize traditional details as well as materials and try to ensure quality. So we're talking about brick and masonry as well as fiberglass siding, cladding, they're close throughout, these are durable materials, long-lasting. If you want to think about it comparable in terms of a design aesthetic, something you may be familiar with, I would probably point you to the point of reference, a good one would be the compass, which is further down 360 towards, and right though. The difference, obviously, is this project is shorter, it's a three-story building, where that's for. And that's more of an urban product, this is going to be in a natural setting and well buffered. But I think that gives you a sense in terms of a similar architectural style, something that's popular in today's market. In terms of floor plans, the individual units are a mix of one and two bedrooms. The layouts are modern, they're large, they're open, they're efficient, but no wasted space. We have kitchen space, the kitchen's open to the living space, it's sort of a peninsula seating arrangements. And that's something that folks are looking for today in the market. In addition, there are things like walk-in closets, ensuite baths, individual washers and dryers, realized quality fixtures and finishes and all those things, increase quality and certain functionality and desirability in the market. Something about the floor plans, and I think we touched on, Joyce touched on in her presentation, is that they are unique to King William. I know there are some apartments in the vicinity, but they're low and on bedroom. I know that there are a number of approvals that have been applied, I would suggest the same is likely true with those. And I think that's the key, is to offer something unique for this market. Something that we think helps address some housing that might not be addressed currently. And so the focus on the one-bedrooms would provide homes to support workforce housing. So county service providers, teachers, first responders, particularly ones that are just starting out. Provide homes to support employees, for instance, for the commercial development center garage. That would certainly allow, based on the maintenance free aspect of the housing, provide homes that some county residents may choose to downsize or retire into. There are homes that might also allow out-of-town parents to retire closer to their adult children that live in King William. And finally, provide homes in support of the next generation of kids, allowing young adult children to stay close to home, to start in the community, rather than having you downtown. So staying close to the home but enjoying the same amenities that they might see elsewhere, but then not see elsewhere. In the end, the goal is certainly to meet those housing needs, to do so with a modern development, with the architecture, the quality, you know, the amenities, the unit design to have the same sense of excitement, sizzle that other new projects in metro area have. And in the end, provide a level of quality and design county residents need, that county residents in need of that housing, you know, can sort of get excited about. And lastly, on that issue with the one-bedrooms, one thing that typically goes along with one-bedroom units is the focus on, or rather, inherent lack of school-aged children in those units. And that typically limits the impact on school systems from a physical perspective. Now, based on discussions at the planning commission, late last year, we proposed several additional conditions. And we thank you for the time and for letting us do that. There is the emergency planning discussion, condition that was discussed, the lighting condition. Your zoning ordinance does have lighting considerations in it, but it doesn't have applicable requirements for multifamily law. So we tried to bolster those in a commercial district. You may see a high requirement, or industrial district, may see a high requirement of lighting at 25, 30 feet. We've reduced that to 15. We talked about pedestrian lighting, the extent that we want to provide that in more of all the situations of lighting. Of course, all having to meet the requirement in the county code, being sharp cut off and, you know, dropping down and all that sort of thing. And then just to, just to verify, because there will be computers, that 0.5, we're proposing a 0.5 foot candle restriction. You typically see that as like a property line, like the property line has to be this or below. Right? This is actually at the inside of that tree line. So you have a low 0.5 value maximum at that tree line. And then you have double-sayer row of evergreen trees and opaque fence and then buffering as well. So the idea is to really shield adjacent properties. And then finally, we did have that proposed screening condition in order to offer the modification of the location of some of the evergreen trees that we're proposing. This was shown by staff, we didn't necessarily explain it, but that red line there, just to help us understand a little bit, that's a site line, it's one of the central crossing lots. And it's looking across the site, so we're moving from bottom of the screen to the top, from the property line, moving over to the tree line and ultimately to the building. The topo at that property line is, I have it at an average of 173, it's at 172, 174. Moving towards that tree line, you cover 70 feet. The site actually rises three to four feet. And that's where we're showing the additional landscaping, but no grading would happen in that area. So all of those trees would be retained. Having the evergreens installed there, which is really at a higher level, makes sense in terms of increasing their impact. And then moving from there across the parking lot towards the building, it's actually gradual falling of the site, with the foundation being back around 173. So we're going from 173 to somewhere around 173, with the trees actually at some elevation in between. The point is, the building really is not on the site. It will sit at similar elevation to the property line, as the property line, in some cases lower. And of course, it is a variable site. It may vary slightly from how it's a lot. The evergreens is proposed, yeah, they may be in the best location. But that being said, you know, while we've increased the buffering, we've increased the distance of the buildings from the adjacent properties. And we retain the evergreens as well as the fence in the design. We wanted to be even more responsive in certain extent that neighbors may still have concerns. Concerns about the specific topography on their side, or maybe some fall on their side. Or they may have concerns about the quality of the buffering that's remaining, whether it's. Or they may have concerns about the quality of the buffering that's remaining, whether it's deciduous or everything, et cetera, et cetera. So we're proposing to work with them on a case by case basis, and so what we like to do is, before we get to the occupancy, we have an opportunity to reach out to them. And and at their direction, we could take some of those landscaping, like some of those screening trees. And provide them in a location where they think they provide the most impact, and that could be. Close to the property, it could be something that we're to mass together in a particular location. We wouldn't be willing to plant them on their property at the extent that we wanted that. And the idea is that, obviously, you want to screen something, and the screen closer to you is is helpful, right? I want to see something, if I don't want to see something, bringing the screen, screening closer, ultimately, is going to do a better job, so. If that's a desire, we'd certainly be willing to work with them on that. And then finally, I would say that I appreciate staff's comment about the vinyl retrieval, that this is actually exhibit we had submitted in twenty twenty three. And, you know, we have intended for that to carry over, I know we've had some changes staff, and and so we're agreeable to that, and that's our goal, and I appreciate your time. Certainly, answering, really answering questions.
Thanks. Are there any questions for Mr. Baker?
Yes. I'd like to know. Given the majority are one bedrooms. You built such before, right?
Well, I'm a, I'm a zoning consultant.
Okay.
And we work on projects all over town, zoning, voting, etc., etc., so we see a lot of these.
Okay, and so price point, and I know you can't be here as soon, but tell me the price point.
Today's market on those one bedrooms there, so that's like six hundred and fifty square foot unit, and they're right around twelve hundred.
So twelve hundred plus potentially. So you would anticipate. Maybe just singles or couples with no children primarily is what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, there are a couple of different ways you, it's like, it's based on what I was describing, it could be a single, it could be a couple, ideally. It could be someone retiring at that location, again, maybe they want to be there, maybe they don't have maintenance on their home, that could be one or two people. It could be a a young professional that's got the job downtown, but you had to be close to my parents. This has some of the same amenities, has some of the same excitement in terms of the design, it's the stuff I'm seeing downtown, this lets me be a little closer to home, and my rent's a lot less, right? So that's, that's what we're looking at, ideally, it's going to be a one or two, hopefully, a professional service provider. You know, or maybe a retired.
And is there a home loan assistance fee?
No, so these would be, these would be rental, so it's just, it's just the rental, and there's property management that's experienced.
Because a pool concerns me, and like, really, what, what, how much use will you get from the pool, I just don't know, and. Does the noise, are the neighbors concerned with noise from, you know, the pool people outside? It could be an all day, you know, thing with noise in the pool, I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, pools are certainly something that there's an concern that we can initiate a timeframe on, because I've seen that done before. We have really tried to design it, again, the L shape of the building. So we've had a decent amount of outreach, we've had a couple of meetings out, you know, it's been two years, right? So we've met some of the neighbors, we've had neighbors, and in one neighbor, one, one couple in particular, that's been here consistently. In past meetings, but we've been planning a commission with you a few times, and I've seen you here tonight, but, but, you know, you know. And we've heard those concerns are typically in central crossing to the south, and so we've oriented the building. In a way where, you know, the the pool was going to be, not only do we have the additional buffering and the additional distance. But we have the building that's in between as well, which will, in itself, buffer them from some of the noise. But again, that's something I would suggest to you, considering that that would be certainly another condition that we can consider.
Well, I'll take, to look at this, if you don't know me, but my mind goes in a little crazy direction sometimes. I kind of thought that'd be a nice property to have little cottage, little teeny homes, which would be. Really idea for a lot of northerners come here, because it is a lot cheaper and to be closer to their grandparents. I don't know that they want to live in an apartment, might they want to live in a little tiny village home setup? Maybe, I'm not sure. That would be, to me, a nicer offer than three story, mostly one bedroom apartments. I don't understand what I'm talking about, it's part of the tiny homes.
Yeah, I mean, it's a different, a little bit different product.
It is, yes.
I understand, I think I understand what you're suggesting, yes.
Yeah. Where my mind works.
That's fine.
Well, thank you, you gave a very nice presentation.
I would, I would just say, go back to that, that one of the things, you mentioned three stories, and you mentioned the apartments, and there's a. Yeah, there's a, where you are in in the metropolitan area, we're in housing places, right? So we do, we are, we are in efficiency of housing, and even if we do have some projects that are on the books, a lot of those are not happening, because we're in an environment where. The financing is very difficult, the materials are up, and that will potentially even higher in inflation, when we have interest rates that are high, right? So it's really hard to get these things out of the ground, so we're trying to bring something unique. You're getting to that density, you know, the reduction in density, something like you're talking about, doesn't necessarily always equate to more protections to the to the neighborhood. Whereas we're talking about, you know, a significant setback, retaining buffering. Retaining the fencing that was in the original plan, and then the double staggered green evergreen, a row of evergreens. And you don't have to go any further than right adjacent, you know, McCully Park, and I, I don't, I'm not here to say that's not going to be a very nice proposal, right? But that's only sixty five units, right? So when I say right here, this is only sixty five units. And if you go there, drive out, I mean, they've cleared right to the property line. There's no buffer, there's no provision in that, in that pool for fencing, there's no provision that approval for. You know, the double staggered evergreen, so I guess my point is, is that by virtue of guessing three stories, by virtue of getting that density, you know, we can. We can provide the quality thing, the amenities, the pool, the clubhouse, based on the form. And at the same time, we can limit the footprint, and allows us to do some of those things in terms of providing some buffering, and I'm, I'm just saying, if you drive by, there's no buffering on that adjacent stuff. Not even on the King William side, we're providing substantial buffering, hopefully, don't even necessarily see this driving by, so.
Good job.
Any other questions for Mr. Baker? Mr. Howard, is there any questions for Mr. Baker? All right, we'll open this up for public hearings.
Jessica Budd?
Just, I just have some personal things to add.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board, my name is Jessica Budd, and I live at one two four Central Crossing Terrace. Which is that house right there in the middle, that backs directly up to the proposed apartment complex. I'm here before you this evening to respectfully request that you deny the application for the conditional use permit. This project will have significant negative impacts on the adjacent property owners. Chief among them is the substantial loss of privacy that we will experience. As you can see from the proposed site plan, the parking lot and apartment buildings will be in very close proximity to our homes, forty feet is only a few car lengths. It's not far from the back of our houses. Additionally, the apartment buildings will be three stories tall, they will have balconies, and they'll be built on land that is topographically higher than ours. The red line that was shown to you earlier stops the back of our property, which is the highest point, so that's very deceiving. It goes down from there. This means that the residents of the apartment buildings will be able to look down upon our homes and backyards from their windows and balconies with the outside view of our house and our backyard at all times. If this project is approved, every time I go out into my backyard to garden, or cook on the grill, or relax and read a book. I will have an audience of people staring down at me from three plus stories above. Due to the topography of the land and the significant regrading that would be needed, it is likely that all of the existing old gross trees will be removed. As such, any vegetation buffer on the proposed site plan will consist, will likely consist only of entirely new plantings. As one of the members of the planning commission stated at a previous meeting, this is a loss of privacy that neither a vegetation buffer nor a six foot tall privacy fence will ever be able to remedy. We will also be negatively impacted by the noise. This apartment complex has two hundred and thirty eight parking spaces, which gives a good sense of the magnitude of just how many people will be coming and going. Directly behind our homes at all hours of the day and night. Imagine trying to sleep at night or in the morning, and constantly hearing the noise of people shutting their car doors, starting their cars, talking in the parking lot, talking on their balconies above us. Having parties, playing music, and so on. Noise can also be reasonably anticipated from the pool and party events, the clubhouse. Additionally, this project will bring a significant amount of artificial light to the back of our homes. There will be light from the parking lot lights, the apartment buildings, which again, can be higher than our homes, and the headlights that potentially two hundred and thirty eight cars. Driving in and out of the development. For my home in particular, as you can see on the proposed site plan, some of the parking spaces point directly into my kitchen, my bedroom, and my bathroom. I submit to you that it simply does not make sense, from a planning perspective, to place a high density, three story. Multifamily apartment complex consisting of almost exclusively one bedroom apartments. As well as a clubhouse, a pool, and two hundred and thirty eight parking spaces immediately adjacent to a long existing residential neighborhood. This especially does not make sense in King William County. Many people move to and invest in homes in King William County specifically because of its rural character. We often hear the refrain from our county leaders in this very room, that quote, we want to preserve the rural character of the community. Approval of a project like this immediately next to the central crossing subdivision is not what we would usually expect from our county leaders. Additionally, over the last two or so years, this board has already approved hundreds upon hundreds of new housing opportunities of a variety of types. Including a substantial number of apartments, none of those projects impact existing residential housing. There is no need to approve yet another apartment complex, especially a location that will cause such negative impacts to existing residents. Further, there is an apartment complex across the street from the entrance to some of the crossing that is set unfinished for years. If there was such a need or market for this type of housing in the county, women think that the owner of that development would have already capitalized on that need. And completed that long unfinished project. We have faithfully showed up at every meeting on this project over the last two years. Many of our neighbors have attended as well, they have also spoken on the phone to Ms. Graham, and they submitted written comments. Some of their written comments are included in your agenda packets tonight. Please hear our very valid and very real concerns as your constituents. It simply does not make sense for the county to approve this project in this location. Please deny the application, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Budd?
Mr. Lord, my name is Chris Budd, and I reside at one twenty four Central Crossing Terrace in the fourth district. My home is an adjacent property to propose three story apartment complex. I'm here before you to express my opposition to the conditionally used permit for central apartments. Please remember, this motion failed the planning commission, and now has been forwarded to you with no recommendation. When I moved to my home in King William in two thousand eight, I was always told to be thoughtful, what would always be built behind my property? And parcel in question since that time has been zoned as R one, I had confidence in the peace. That homes, whether single family, townhomes, carriage homes, not a multi-story apartment complex without something to be behind. Now we are at the precipice of a three story, excuse me, a three story apartment complex being built. The parcel where the apartment complex is proposed and built is already an elevated lot. I believe the pictures provided in the gen packet kind of illustrates that point, as, and this elevator is compared to the surrounding parcels, not just my own. Down the street, across the street, all, all and down to the street. This will eliminate any simple enjoyment I can have in my backyard, or even my front yard, because my front yard is much lower elevation than this proposed. Building, with an apartment complex, you can estimate twenty, thirty, maybe forty folks, just for that one side of the building, one ton behind you, with a down review of your yard. The applicant during the second committee meeting mentioned solid apartment complex, similar to the one on Route three sixty, just over the handover to the regular line, just before Burnham. And remember, this redesign was not to accommodate any concerns from adjacent property owners, but to remedy issues with fire access. Imagine something like that nestled around pre-existing multifamily homes. Is King William going to be the next mechanic for Shore Palm? The night before each meeting, this proposal slated to be discussed, I may get going to drive past that complex down on three sixty, being in Rock County. And I try to imagine how this proposal is going to impact this surrounding area. Each time I drive by, one of the things that sticks out to me the most is it's going to be bright. No amount of buffering or fence will come close to reducing the amount of lighting that is required by code or insurance. That will be spread to the surrounding neighborhood, remember, this lighting will be attached to poles and affixed to the building. This lighting is by far greater than anything carriage homes, townhomes, or single family homes would generate. As was discussed with the planning commission, no one knows where lighting fixtures will be, as the point is before your only conception. I know, looking at the colorized site plan, the generous oversized greenery makes the building seem almost insignificant, and the buffering is over more than that, please don't let that distract you. Again, no amount of fence or buffering is going to reduce lighting impact, a commercial style building like this would generate as compared to homes. If lighting is not going to be an issue, then why offer install screening on adjacent properties? If we continue to look at the proposed plan, please take notice of how close parking lot and thoroughfare will be to the adjacent lots. And it's a lot closer on the other side, we're talking within three car lengths. Hope that it really adds a real world perspective as to the proximity of this apartment complex will be to the surrounding homes and neighborhoods. County has already approved many housing developments during the last two years and even longer, many of these are still in the books pending construction. This King William and its residents need another apartment complex, especially nestled next to existing neighborhoods. As my wife said, two hundred and thirty eight parking spaces. That will be on this elevated parcel that's just under nine acres. Again, I stress, I hope that you voted to deny the application on behalf of the presence of King William County. Please think about the following, lighting, loss of privacy, elevation, property value. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Akeem Washington?
Oh, all subject.
And that's it.
That's all, all right. Close, the the public hearing is closed. We'll be back up, are there any questions or discussions regarding CP two four, just.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I've, I've heard from both sides on this equation. And I actually. Have stood in the backyard of one of the residents that is going to be, you know, so affected by this, and it's definitely. They're definitely down low, and they're going to be looking up at these apartments. You know, I didn't allow to take measure anything to look at what it really will be. But it's definitely going to be, I guess, a hindrance for the homeowners in that area. And I do want to know, we also did receive some emails that are in our packet from other homeowners, so it's not just the two that people have been referencing to. I've heard from many that are in opposition to this as well. It's a beautiful plan, I mean, I think the apartments look great, however, I don't know if. This is something that the fourth district in that particular area needs. I'm still concerned about the apartments, even though they are one bedroom, I still think there is potential for it to bring. Family, like children with single families, single moms with kids, so I do, I can't, I don't think it's a fair assessment to say. It's not going to affect our schools or our other services, I think, no matter what goes there, it's, it's going to be an issue. But I just don't know if a three story apartment is what we really need on that piece of property. So that's kind of.
I'd go the same, I, I try to imagine that I were in y'all's shoes. And that apartment building is coming right behind my house, I don't think I would like that at all. I moved to the country not to be in an apartment-like living. And so I'd be very disappointed if I were a property owner that was coming in my backyard. I wouldn't want it, and we've got others that are coming, I think we need to wait to see. What are we going to get with those other apartments that we got? I, I don't think this is the right location for apartments, I think that space is better used for something else, I don't know why. But certainly not apartments at this time, and that's just my thoughts, and I want to thank you all, Mr. Mr. Budd, for coming and speaking, we did read the other letters as well, and. I'm sort of out of my mind, so.
I can tell you what you're going to get, a lot of people, and it's going to be active, but. And West One is getting very much the same way, they're building something on their own, but we have got to break some, some. At least limit some of them. You tell me, I mean, legal domain. I'll probably still say it, but. We do have to limit how much, how much we're going to do, and I think on this one, I think you know how, but.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
You have any questions or comments regarding this CP?
It's.
It's concerning to the type of tenants you're going to get.
What did you say, Mr. Edwards? Concerned?
It's concerning what type tenants you're going to get.
I don't think you would guess at that one.
Any, any other comments or questions, Mr. Edwards?
No, I think they've covered their bases pretty well. They've done everything we've asked for. So I'll say that for, for the developer side of it, but the neighborhood doesn't like the idea, but...
And Joyce's came split with one member not voting at all?
One member abstained, and it was two to two.
Okay.
Two for, two against.
One of the things that concerns me with this is the density, but the strain that it would add to our law enforcement and fire. And we were already stretched thin there, and adding this, this, we're still trying to address, I'm looking at how we're going to address the influx of homes that we have just coming across the street. So it's, I don't know. It's difficult. I want to hear a motion.
I made a motion that we now see UPO 4-2022 for the home apartments.
Sure. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for denial. Mr. Edwards, did you hear that? This motion is to deny.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes, what a roll call, please.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Bancroft?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Chair Catlett?
That's not. All right. Moving along, I would like to listen to Ms. Hayes, if you have to pull that screen to our presentation section and invite Mr. Edwards up from all points for an all points project update. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to provide an update. I've got a lot of good news tonight. More to come next month or so. So we have invested about $20 million in broadband across the county for our project and partnership with the county, State Broadband Office, Dominion, Raffigan Electric Cooperative. We split our county project up into six different network areas. The sixth and final active cabinet we turned on last week. So a lot of folks are getting marketing now for the next couple of weeks that we go for a website and sign up and get service. Beginning of activation turned on back in November. So certainly Miles said we get the sixth network cabinet turned on. About 400 of the 2,500 or so locations have signed up for service to date. Going to our website at APB Fiber dot com. All those folks, and we just started notifying them, we're going to give them each a $100 service credit on their next bill with respect to their installation fee. And then we're also doing a $100 installation discount for new signups for probably the next 30 or 40 minutes. So go to the website, APB Fiber dot com. Here you get a $100 service credit or discount on that installation. We're also turning on a customer referral program now that the whole network has been activated. So this means if you get your neighbor, you go to our website, and follow the instructions and give him your name, you get a $50 credit on your service fee for the next month. This is going to roll out. We'll communicate this to all 2,500 locations in the project. We'll have a website for it, mailers, emails, et cetera. This is a great new program rolling out now that we have service available. And we've got a couple of maps coming up, but I want to point out so we have two electric utility providers that are our partners. One's a cooperative, one's an investor in utility. Dominion was able to invest in their, it's called Middle Mile Fiber, and a significant investment in the mileage in our network is due to Dominion's construction. They also sent some stats about the poles that we put through the electric make-ready construction process with REC and Dominion. So not only a huge investment in your fiber infrastructure, but also in your electric grid. The project right now, the BEID acronym, it's a Virginia telecommunications initiative, state program. We are rolling through the, I would call it the paperwork phase now. We're going to close that out by the end of March. And we're going to still install locations as they come in, normal service request well after March. If there were locations that we built our fiber pass and we're not technically in this project, we're going to start offering service to them probably in the beginning of April. So go to our website. If you type in your address now, it may say you're not currently in the service project area, but it gives you the option to input your information. Please submit your information there, even if it says you're not technically in the project. It will contact you once you can sign up. Then at the end of my presentation, I got a little update on the BEID program, which we'll roll into as we close out the day. So here's a map of the county. It's kind of hard to tell. Each one of these lines is an electric utility pole in the western side of the county. That's REC poles. The eastern side is mainly Dominion poles. We've processed make-ready engineering for about 4,200 poles and ended up attaching to 3,600. So make-ready engineering process, they do a lot of load analysis for hypothetical ice storms, if you experience quite a bit. I have our fair share so far this year. And so they do a lot of engineering, and they say, all right, well, this pole needs to be replaced, or we need additional guy wires, or we need to move our electric equipment before all points can attach to the fiber. So while this project is not explicitly about pole engineering and replacing poles, we've done a huge investment in your electric grid in the county. This also does not show underground routes where we work with VDOT to put in conduit in right of way. So this is just the poles here. I should also point out that while REC is a cooperative and does not have the same leverage ability in the middle mile, we are leasing fiber from REC to connect the kind of the two sections of the network. So if you see someone from REC or Dominion, thank them for helping to get us here today. Now we'll go to the next slide. This is a screenshot from the national broadband map. Have the URL here. This is managed by the Federal Communications Commission. I highly recommend that folks go to this website, type in your address. If there is not a green dot over your home, that means the FCC doesn't know that you exist when it comes to broadband reporting. So if you go and type in your address, and you don't see a green dot over your home, just literally click on the map, or pop up an option that says add new location. Type in your information. It takes probably two minutes. And once they process that, then on, every single internet service provider has to report whether or not they offer service to your home. Another thing that happens pretty frequently, more in typical areas that we serve outside of the urban areas, you can type in your address, and the green dot is over a barn. Whether on the opposite side of your personal or somewhere they're going that the FCC's consultant has identified as your home, you can click on that dot and move the dot over to your home. And now the internet service provider has the exact latitude and longitude of your home. While the mapping data on the broadband is certainly not perfect, it has gotten much better since at the time we scoped our project. As you can go to this map and update your information if it looks up. So the next phase of broadband investment across the country, and certainly in Virginia, is through the BEID programs as part of the Infrastructure Act. Virginia was allocated a billion and a half dollars for broadband deployment and equity affordability. This is to expand broadband to folks who don't have 100 by 20 megabits per second. This is like a typical cable connection. This is maybe four times faster speed than when we scoped our initial projects. There are a lot of locations that could have been considered served three years ago that now don't meet the definition of broadband. Or because of the better mapping, they found where existing providers don't offer service, so there's a lot of eligibility in King William. The law requires Virginia to have a plan for every single location on this map. And there are hundreds in the county. We're going to be applying for most or all those on Saturday, March 1st. It's the applications we do. Not a lot of hard dates in this process, but by July 25th, the state will propose its plan for 130,000 locations across the state to NTIA, that's the federal agency of broadband. Hopefully, they include that application. If not, they will have someone else with a plan to get broadband to every single location on the net. And we have asked the county to provide a letter of support, which I very much appreciate. And that will go in our application packet on Saturday. Between then and July 25th, they will make those applications and awards public for any location that is, let's say, new construction, not shown up on the national map. For some reason, it is discovered that they're not actually served, that they didn't get funded in the BEID program. The state is going to continue funding broadband expansion for years to come. This is a mission at the state level, at the federal level, certainly at the local level. So they're not going to let it slip for any of these locations, but the BEID is probably the largest investment, certainly of our generation in the project. We go to the next slide. The BEID applications are going to be submitted on a zip code retaliation area. These are the different tickets in the county that are cut on the county border. So each one of these colored polygons will get at least one application from a provider. That's the geographic area that they will work funding on. You have to apply for 95% of the locations within each of these polygons. Take all kinds of commitments, a lot of strings attached to the funding, but at the end of the day, if you are a dot on their map and you're in one of these polygons, you're going to get a plan for broadband or evidence that an existing provider can serve you with no extra credit. So great program. I think King William is well-positioned for this. And as far as our customers are concerned, they won't notice a difference between the BEID program and the BEID program. And having substantial investment of brand-new fiber across the county certainly puts us in a position for the BEID program. That I'd be happy to answer your questions.
How many installations have y'all done to resident?
Well, we have 400 signed up. I don't know the exact number of the installations, but I will get that.
As close as you can get. I mean, we have seen these maps for years. And they don't mean a whole lot to the person waiting on the internet to be hooked up.
Yes, sir. I think it's at a couple hundred that have been installed. Major sections turned on last Wednesday. But now, as that marketing rolls out, we'll see more people take advantage of that service.
Because I think the last date we were supposed to have was this month.
Yes, sir. They can sign up for a full year after service is available and get all the benefits of the program. And then after that, they can sign up at their, at their desire.
And so the BEID application is a new one, you said y'all were going to apply. Is that because you're waiting for the last minute of coverage or something? Like, why do you wait till the last minute?
Because they have a 90-day window to apply. They open the window on December 1st, so you date March 1st.
Yeah, I can swear that you waited until the last minute.
They're not going to look at anything until March 1st.
So you're not going to have any problems, like submitting that day, your hair is going to go down, nothing's going to happen bad, right?
Sure they have not. They have. So they began this BEID program and process probably a year and a half ago. We've been the largest participant in all of the challenge processes, data up to speed. And for probably 14 months, we participated in all of the industry sessions and webinars for the application. All of our applications have a professional engineering stamp. All the funding was secured. Hopefully, the state's application portal doesn't crash. It's asking a lot for a remote grant system. But if they have a problem like that, maybe they'll send it. They have some...
Because if you and everybody else waits till the first, you could overload their system?
We're not going to wait until Saturday. We'll have it all done by closing business with technical assistance from your staff if you say. Well, that's just the applications are due, and that's when I start. Any questions? Mr. Edwards, any questions?
No. It doesn't matter what I ask. There's not going to be the right answer.
Mr. Edwards, the main infrastructure that's substantially complete. Yes, now we're just moving to residential connections. Relational connections. We have some paperwork with the state that will file with the county as well. But with that, sixth network cabinet, that's, that's it. It's a long time coming. Yes, sir. A lot better news than we've gotten before, so...
That's true.
All right.
That's if it happens.
They just said it was done. They turned it on when they...
They said that a couple other times, too. It was almost done.
All right. I've got nothing else.
I get chewed out every day about that thing.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Thank you. All right, moving on. Now, I'm Mr. Pinnerup with Library Systems and Services.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board Supervisors. I'm actually Todd Frager, the CEO of Library Systems and Services. I'm happy to be able to present tonight. Talk about a possibility of partnership with the county, what it might look like to partner with Library Systems and Services. So I'll get started already. So we know the challenge that counties are facing. There's a demand for additional services, improvement of services, but there really isn't a demand for increased tax dollars to come along with that. That's why our model is unique and interesting, because we partner with counties across the country to really leverage our expertise, our efficiencies, to bring better library services for significantly less money than the counties are spending. We also look to improve the outreach of the library. Libraries do a great job. I'm sure your library does a great job as well. But we look to go beyond the base of what the library currently serves. We know that most libraries typically serve 10 to 20% of the population. And part of the population is incredibly important. It's core to the library. But we believe it's, it could do more. It could reach more parts of the population by increasing programming, increasing the collection, that would make it a more interesting product for the entire community. But in doing so, our model is based on a consortium, which you might be familiar with. The major difference in our consortium, although it's the details of how it works, is the local governance and local control over costs. Typically, when you join a consortium, the two complaints that most people question say is that we have to give up local control because the consortium makes all the decisions, and we get hit with increasing expectations of dollars every year with very little control over that. Our model addresses that for you. So just like the county, we certainly appreciate and believe in your port mission, improving the lives of the citizens here through education and other things. We do believe that libraries are worth that. There is a direct correlation between strong communities and strong libraries. We know when people go to a community or stay in a community, they have expectations for services, whether it's healthcare, whether it's education. Libraries are typically right up there. People want to believe they have a strong library system in their community, and we support that idea. At the heart of it for us is the staff. So in this model, the staff is local. You have a local library director, a local library staff that we work with. We bring national experience to that staff, but it's still very much the local library. When you go in your library, it'll never say library systems and services. It's truly nowhere to be found. We're in the background. So the shirts, the names, the people, it's still your local library. You know, King William Library System. You will not see Ellis and his president there, other than the fact that we think you'll see amazing services. You will not see Ellis and S President there, other than the fact that we think you'll see amazing services. So important in this model, we know that you have a significant investment already in the library, roughly six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. We've done an analysis. We know that we can, right out of the gates, save the county roughly eleven percent of those dollars, which is important to give back to the community. But in doing so, we also believe we can expand services within the library. I believe right now, your library is currently thirty nine hours. We're proposing, right out of the gates, to increase that to fifty two hours. And again, we'll work with the commission and we'll work with the board supervisors to determine how those hours should be best allocated. We also look at, like I said before, increasing programming. So part of our services is we do a lot of outreach. We do a lot of community assessments as part of the contract. We build a strategic plan. We look at what the community is saying, what they would like to see done in the library. So it's important that we bring, part of our model, our consortium, is that we do programming around the country. So what we're able to do basically is bring those programs to the local community, of which some will be very appropriate, some might not be appropriate. But you get a broader view of what's out there in the market and what the community might appreciate. Part of that as well is our collection management team. They have a team of professionals that will look at the materials in your library and work with the library board, work with the board supervisors, work with a plan that we all create for collection management policy, but to bring high quality materials to the library. Our goal is typically, we like to see high circulation within the library system itself. I think the days of having racks and stacks of books that don't go anywhere, I don't know that's as attractive to people as it once was. They take up a lot of space within the libraries. Obviously, there's ways to get materials in the library, whether it's through reciprocal borrowing agreements, which we do in all of our libraries. But there's a way to make sure that the materials are relevant and important to the community. We bring our IT expertise. We are a library company, that's all we do. So we have professionals that look at what are the current trends within the library space? And we bring those to you to present as options for the library. And again, as I said, a key factor for us is outreach. So we have marketing professionals that will work with the local library, the library director, to really reach out to the community and seek what other the community's input is to what they'd like to see in the library. In addition to that, also working with you to identify additional revenue sources. So we have a grant team that will work with you in the state of Virginia, looking for state grants and federal grants. So our model, at the core of it, so about forty five years ago, a few librarians got together and said, there's got to be a better way to do this. We're frustrated. There's a lot of inefficiencies. And their core model basically looked and said that every library, whether big or small, or anywhere in the country, does a lot of the same administrative functions. That is not different in every library. So what if we did on a national basis, all of that administrative work? Which is important because libraries have administrative things that need to be done. But from a patron perspective, it's probably one of the less valuable things that they see. When you walk in a library, you love the engagement of the person when you walk in the door. People providing programming, providing services, the frontline employees. If there's people in the back doing administrative functions, that's important, but it's not necessarily helping. But what our model, by doing these on a national basis, we're able to drive efficiencies and drive price benefits for our members. So for example, we purchase eight million dollars of materials every year from all the bookstore distributors. So if you're spending fifty thousand dollars, we can stretch that fifty much further because of the discounting we get and the processing fees that we're able to get on a national perspective. But I'll put at the heart of all this, which is what people want to know, is that it's still local control. We'll never tell you what you should be putting in that library. We work with the library board, we work with this group, we work with the local library staff, library director, to determine what's appropriate for this community. In addition to this, another benefit that we've recognized is that libraries are often, I say they're put on an island. Basically, they're part of a staff, they're part of a county staff, but the rest of the staff is very busy. There's not really necessarily focused on the library. The benefit of our organization is that we're able to take the local library staff, keep them part of the local community, the local county government, but also introduce them to a much larger library staff across the country. So they can get to know peers within the library space, so they can run ideas by them, they can learn from them, they can grow professionally as well. So it just broadens their perspective of what's available in the library space. But the heart of it for us is it really is built on partnerships. When I go to talk to our customers around the country, I'm always excited when they refer to me as their partner. They look at us as their library experts. Because like I said, in most cases, you all have a lot on your plate, whether it's public safety, whether it's all the things we talked about tonight. The library typically falls to the bottom. And because of that, it doesn't always get the attention that it necessarily deserves. But just knowing that as a library company, that's all we do every day. We wake up every day thinking about your library and are you getting the services you desire? But at the heart of it, again, goes back to local governance. So you want to have complete say as to what's going to happen within your library. Part of the process is we set up a library board and work with you to do that as well. We also know the importance of friends and volunteers and foundations that libraries have. We value those people greatly, work with them in all of our libraries, we're present everywhere. They add an amazing value to the library system, and we work very hard to make sure that they're successful. And also networking with other parts of the community, working with schools, working with business communities. Our goal was to make sure that we leverage what everyone's doing. We don't want to repeat services with parks and recs or anybody else. But we want to make sure that we're all working closely together to coordinate our efforts to complement one another. I think it's important to talk about, sometimes you'll hear the word privatization. It's certainly not that. Privatization would be kind of transferring the assets to our company. You're not going to do that. They're your assets. It'll always be your building, your materials, your physical assets, always owned by you a hundred percent. We're bringing the expertise and the staffing, but it's your library. So don't want to be confused by that. And it's always going to be free to the public. There's never going to be a change in that policy unless that would be something you would desire. So Manassas Park is a great example, up the street in Virginia. I met with them back in twenty twenty. They weren't happy with Prince William County. Their costs were going up every year, they had zero control, the quality of services weren't at their level of expectations. So we partnered with them in twenty twenty. We immediately opened their own first library. They had a public golf course clubhouse that they own. It's a two thousand square foot facility. We stood it up right away, put up a library in there. While we were building a brand new ten thousand square foot facility for them, which is currently open, highly referenceable. We've saved them money, so they're spending less money with us and they work with the county. They have the local control that they want. A big part of it, which is part of the contract, is the process that we go through. I think we give you a copy of this, but it's a lengthy list of all the policies, procedures, things you have to do to set yourself up as a library. We do all of that. We did all of that for Manassas Park, and we would also be doing that for you. A couple other examples I'll give because they're similar in regards to the size of the libraries in the world. So these are longstanding partnerships with us. This is Arlington, Tennessee, and the next one's going to be Milton, Tennessee. And I think the key with that is that they've been with us since two thousand and five. So my point being that they've had opportunities to renew or take it back and house or go other directions. In every case, they decided to stay with us. And if you talk to them, they would say, because they trust us as their library experts, they do not think they could do it better if they took it back and housed. Important to know that you always have that freedom of option, just as they're running independently now through the government. We know that, so we know we have to provide exceptional service and prove to you that you're better off using us to provide these services than to take them back internally. Millington, again, two thousand and six. We helped them, we refurbished their library, redesigned their library. A big part of what we do is design planning, which is part of your contracts. We go in, I went into your buildings today, very nice. We go in there and work with the staff and work with you as well. And we say, is this space being utilized to the best of its capacity? As libraries are changing, demands for libraries are changing. Is what was done a decade ago or five years ago, is it still relevant? Should we redesign the space? So we're always looking at those. Another big part that I'll mention is, as an organization, we created a product several years ago. Our librarians came back to us and said, the software in library space isn't very good. We don't have products that really help us analyze what we're doing in the library. So could you build something? So we did. We built a product called Library Q. It's used in three thousand libraries around the country today. You'll get that as part of your contract as well, but it brings transparency. It brings you into the library, basically. It shows you what are the activities in the library, who's using the library, who's not using the library? Are the materials circulating? Are they not circulating? Are the programs happening? Who's attending the programs? Are they being widely used? So really, for us, it's about making it so that it's, there is transparency, that it brings analytics to the conversation versus, I feel like the library is doing great, or you'll know if the library is doing great with this product. Library Evolution, that's a big conversation. I get it every day. I've been in this business now for ten years. Go around the country talking about people, they say, are we going to have libraries in five years? Should we have libraries in ten years? Are they relevant? So that is our job, is to figure out the relevancy of libraries to come. If you were to invest in library spaces down the road, whether it's a retail space, a physical space, portable space, what's the return on that investment? Is it meeting the needs of the community? We're going to continue to come back to you and your library board and bring you those ideas and thoughts to make sure that this library and your investment remains relevant for your community. So at the heart of it, we are the largest, all we do, we do federal libraries, public libraries, we do museums, we do event centers. But our focus is libraries. That's what we are. We're nine hundred people, of which ninety five percent of those people are physically in the libraries, providing services. We're very proud of our retention rate. We're very proud of our scores that we get from our employees as well as our customers in regards to satisfaction. We are driven. We do use master screen librarians to run our libraries. There's all, you know, they all meet the state requirements. We will be providing state reporting for you as well, the state of Virginia. So the key takeaways for me is that we're here to design a library for your needs, your governance, at a price point that you can have predictable for the next ten years to come. We don't go back to our customers and say, oops, it's going to be more money, sorry, we need more money, we're going to cut services. We commit through our service level agreement of the services that we're going to provide to you. And we have to hit those. If people ask, well, what happens if we don't? Well, there's a clause in our contract that says if we're not performing, you give us notice, and if you don't solve that, you terminate us. But I will tell you, in the forty five years of the business, no one's ever terminated for performance. No one's even terminated during a contract. That ninety six percent is because we've had people over the forty five years that decided to take it back and house. And if in ten years, we've shown you how to do it, we do it incredibly well, for some reason, you think you would like to take it back and house, that'll always be your option. But we're very proud of our track record and our industry standards. So I think that's. Those are some of our logos of other libraries. Manassas Park is our Virginia library. We have a bunch in Tennessee, Texas, Florida, Kansas, all over the country.
You said you have resource sharing with them so far apart. How long is it going to take to get a book transferred from one location to another?
Yeah, so typically, books can show up within twenty four hours. And again, what we typically do is, like, Manassas Park has a reciprocal relationship with every county around them and every city around them as well. But we also use a national firm called OCLC, which has materials available. So when someone comes in, I want this book. In twenty four hours, we can get the book to show up here.
Is one more. Is your plan, do you keep our presence stayed?
Well, so again, we'll interview, we'll post positions for all the library staff and interview whoever would like to come into and talk to us about a position. We certainly take feedback from the community or from the board supervisors, based on your experience, these people. I don't, I'll be meeting them for the first time. So certainly, we will do reference checks or we will ask on the quality of those people before we hire them.
And it does concern me, because we do have good people.
Sure, and we're going to need good people. Because again, this operates with local people that live in your community, even though we call it outsourcing. Administrative services, yes, they're done around the country and throughout. But all of the services that you love and that you need are going to be performed by your people that live in your community. So we need plenty of good people.
Now, I think the board has suggested that we have a five-member board, correct?
Yeah, that's.
And represent each district.
It's a great idea.
It's all in here in the Virginia state requirements.
So the services that right now people are talking about, you can manage those, correct? Like things like KUPLA, I think I'm saying, right? Other things, you've gone through a list and compared and.
Yes.
Okay, so we won't be able to sell the same services?
Yes. Yeah, our core is that the minimum is you just keep what you currently have and then expand upon it and make any case that you would recommend.
Thank you.
And I like that the buying power of items, it's a greater buying power and probably less as well. So you know, we find that there's a particular book that maybe is popular and, you know, oh, we don't have it, but hey, well, let's get ten of them. You know, so we can have it for the book club. Okay, they'll be here in twenty four hours, something like that.
Yeah, so again, our buying power and our relationships with distributors gets quick action and gets immediate. So when, again, when a pretty book comes down, the best number is coming. A library that's only purchasing ten is going to be in line with all those other libraries that are ordering ten. Ours are at the front of the line.
And reciprocal, for instance, you mentioned that Manassas does have reciprocal with the others. Do you all manage that reciprocal process as well?
We do. I mean, we work with the city because part of those are contractual obligations that you're going to have to make with those jurisdictions, but we help manage that in facilities. But I think a big part of it for you all of you is just, the idea was really to have that local control over your library system. It's just a great thing to have.
And prior to implementing this, you all also do studies beforehand to let us know that here's what we found in library IQ and other data that you all have. I mean, you spend a lot of time collecting data in our environment, correct?
We do, and we do a lot of community assessments as well. So again, our goal was to do a ton of outreach and kind of conversations with the community and get feedback. Because again, this doesn't work if you're not thrilled with the services and the community's not thrilled with what they're seeing. That formula would not, we would not be able to go forward if we're not capable of making sure that everybody's heard and is happy.
Do you have relationships in existence still that date back to forty five years? Because that's what you said you were on.
So the company started forty five years, it was in the federal library space, which we still have relationships with Library Commerce Smithsonian. The first outsourced library contract was in nineteen ninety seven. That was the county of Riverside, it's about thirty five libraries, a couple museums. They're still our customers today. We open new, the fun part with them is opening new facilities and growing and expanding services.
Oh, I didn't realize that you also had a capability to potentially design buildings. Should we go that route one day?
Yes, we'll show you everything. Like, we'll bring in designers to look at existing space. We'll bring in people that bring in plans for new space or new ideas, new types of library engagement. So as part of our contract, you know, we have people who just wake up every day thinking about redesigning or building new things.
And all included in that eleven percent savings.
Yes, all, everything I've described tonight is a hundred percent included within the contract.
And that's before any grants or.
Correct. So the upside is our ability to go out and get grants. Obviously, through this relationship, you also qualify for state aid as well for the library. So there's probably going to be, there will be more revenue on top of the money you are already spending minus the money you're going to save.
And you have a team that that's all they do is grant.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Edwards, for a bit about you, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I was listening to everything you said. I'm impressed with their program, and I think it's a good fit.
I have one more question, of course. What would you say to the Naysayers?
I would say, I've been doing this for a decade now. And honestly, when I first heard about this organization, I was in education, public education, not libraries. Someone told me about it, it's like, makes perfect sense, like, you can save money, duh. And then I started actually talking to people in the library space about it. It was not a popular conversation, I found, very early on. Because the initial reaction is, it's changed, disruptive. The model, the traditional model of government providing library services has been around for a hundred years. So it was, it's, there's a ton of pushback. And often, I love this way, again, I'm surrounded by librarians. I love the space, I love what we do in it. I get that often it's, hey, we kind of like the fact that the library sits by itself and it's got its own role that we live in without a whole lot of oversight where people. And again, we're there not to make librarians' lives more difficult, we're there to help them. And they find, the initial reaction is, no, please don't do this, just go away, like the way it is. But every contract that we won, once we got through the initial conversations with people in public comment, they're saying, don't do this. The next day, they're converting, like, we literally, they get to know us, they meet our team, and then they realize, you guys aren't what I thought you might be. And so that's why we're a hundred percent referenceable. And I would always tell people, talk to our directors, talk to our staff, and ask them how they feel about the support that we give them. And if this isn't a good idea for you. And if this isn't a good idea for you, but it's disruptive, it's changed, it's unnerving, and I get it, because the core group of your library supporters love your library with passion, which I appreciate, because we're passionate about it too. I don't want to interrupt that. I don't want them to think they're gonna lose anything in this process. I will say they're gonna gain in this process. The library staff will gain and the community will gain. But I expect to hear people say, you know, it's private company, we don't want... But I'll always say too, government does a great job running libraries, private companies can do a great job. It's not given that either one of those necessarily great or bad. But I will say, being a private company in a government space, we have to be better than everybody else. Because we are under intense scrutiny and microscopes. And if we're not performing, it's gonna be, you would know it. And the fact that, again, we're 100% referenceable with our customers tells you that, you know, we are focused on performance and provide great service.
And as far as education, it sounds like from what I gather, that you all offer ongoing and continuing education to those employees that are currently in these positions. So they have a great opportunity to expand and grow and become even more knowledgeable than they probably ever thought they could. So I like that aspect.
Yeah, so we do tuition reimbursement. Many of our people started off because they want to get an MLIS, but they didn't want to spend money they have the ability to. So we support that program to allow them to go through that. Loan forgiveness, if someone's already gone to school and has all these loans to pay off. As a private company, we try to be better than the government and help you get out of those student loans. But, you know, whether it's organizations, whether it's memberships, if they want to participate in the State Library Association, for sure, we support that. Any association, anything professionally, but like I said, what I love is our community of librarians. We have an entire internal social network of librarians. It's private. Where all they do, I read it all day long. It's like, I'm gonna try this program. I'm gonna try that at my library, or I have a problem, can you help me? And it's the librarians and directors from around the country just jumping in there, giving great advice and support to other librarians. Which, again, when you're a stand, if you were to say, we're just gonna do this ourselves in-house, they're an island. They're really gonna have, I'm sure they could be successful, but I think we can help them be more successful.
Circle question, just looking at this milestone track map. Based on some of these days, if we were to go forward to have our board put in place, that'd be prior to the selection of the director, would our library board have input into the library director selection process?
Yes, so we typically, board supervisors, number one, and county administrator, you get to look at our candidates, tell us if you approve our candidate for them. And then you say, and library working in way as well that's at your discretion and your direction. I see it lots of different ways, but yes, of course, they would have to say, that's...
Yeah, well, and this note, I mean, we'd have very little, it would move for our library governance, where they would kind of take over the role of control of the board and from there. So the whole thing is to get as much input from the citizen community as far as control.
So again, our director won't be successful. It's not a candidate, you're all thrilled. And although they're all our employees, I've never had a situation where I've had a city or county or even a community say, well, we can't stand the staff or the director. They love our team, and that's the way it works.
And you also handle everything website-wise?
Correct.
Marketing and creation and maintaining and...
We can help with logo design, we can help with marketing materials, outreach. And it's been designed the entire website ourselves through our contract, starting inclusive of that, getting it stood up at your approval, but yes, that's part of our services. It's really everything you need to set up, like, it's 100% inclusive of setting up libraries.
And I think I recall some information I've gotten before, so from start to finish, time-wise is about what? To get up and running.
Yeah, so from where we are today, if our target was saying July, June 1st, I mean, we basically take you through, I mean, we can try to accelerate some things, but it's the state of Virginia, just like we did with Manassas Park, kind of walks us through, here's the form, here's the next step, next step. So it really starts kind of beginning of March, running through June 1st, is to get it up and running. It's certainly doable, based on our past experience with Manassas Park.
So you've got plenty of experience with Virginia and other...
We do. We were 100% successful with Manassas Park, getting that one stood up without any, and we learned from that experience as well, so probably even better at it now, we'll back. That was the first one in Virginia.
Mr. Edwards, any comments?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. We will move over to the assistant commentary. Now, already have a board now.
We have seven.
Seven.
Willie Upchall.
Mr. Chairman, my name's Willie Upchall. I live in the second district. I'm not here today to talk about the library. I want to talk about the solar project that was approved last month. First, I'd like to thank all of y'all for your time that you devote to making the county a better place. First, I believe that the public hearing process was unfair. Last month, the solar company represented, gave a presentation, and the board asked a few questions. It's really hard to come up with good questions when you only have a few minutes to understand information. Same problem happened with public. In just a short time, you expect people to ask hard questions to a salesperson who's been giving these talks for years. I think this project should have been delayed so everyone could think carefully. Several important questions were not asked. First, no solid information was shared. The salesman spoke in general terms. How much money will our county actually receive? He said the details would be worked out later by the county attorney. How can you responsibly vote for a project without knowing exactly how it helps our county? Second, they said this would lower homeowners' power bills. But by how much? No one asked for specific numbers about how much my electric power bill would go down. Third, this is a shared solar project, which means homeowners have to pay to join to get consent. Nobody asked how much it costs to participate. No real numbers were given, just general statements. Again, this should have been postponed for more discussion. Finally, I want to talk about how this affects farming. I'm a fifth-generation farmer. My family has farmed in King William for over 150 years. It was clear that most people don't understand farming. Someone mentioned raising sheep on the solar panels. If this makes you feel better about taking farmland out of production, that's ridiculous. The nearest sheep market is far away in Winchester or Pennsylvania. Why? Because that's because that's where sheep are raised, in hilly pastures, not on flat farmland. Also, there's no water source for sheep. A well would cost about $15,000, and the farmer would never make that money back. It just doesn't make sense. Someone also talked about carbon dioxide in the soil under solar panels compared to our current farming methods. I was shocked by how little they understood. As farmers, we take great care of our soil. This field hasn't been plowed in over 20 years. When land is plowed, it releases carbon dioxide in our farming. In our farming method, we plant winter crops to keep the ground covered and help trap carbon in soil. A quick internet search would show that empty fields tend to release more carbon dioxide. And no-till farming can reduce carbon dioxide and help store potash in the soil. They asked the solar salesman these questions instead of an agricultural expert. Lastly, Mr. Chairman, I was disappointed that supervisor from our district asked no questions. He didn't participate in the discussion that directly affected our area. This is unacceptable. While we're spending only a couple months discussing a project that will impact our county for the next 35 years. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir.
Karen Westerman. I'm Karen Westerman. I'm in the second district. So, talking about the library again. And I don't really know why it's come to this point, but in King William, I just want to tell you what I, sort of what I've seen. And King William, what I see is a strong community of people who deeply value their libraries. Over the past months, people have come out, driven in the dark, stayed late, to stand up with facts in hand and passion. And what I also see is a group of five people who betrayed the constituents they were elected to listen to, to do what is best for them, for their own community. This is your community too. What I see are individuals who decided knee-jerk to vote us out of our 80-year library system that serves us with professionalism, intelligence, and genuine care. What we saw was zero research, zero data, yet you claimed that it was to save money based on, again, no research, no doubt. What we saw was that, what we actually did see, was that we would spend more than twice what we pay now for the proposed library that would provide far fewer services and far less quality. What we see are library employees who are much more than employees. They go above and beyond to help us. They are friends by virtue of our library home. They are now facing unemployment, and our lovely libraries will be hollowed out, our community diminished. And what we saw, for no transparency as claimed, that there would be, is five people who circumvented the facts and disregarded the clear and overwhelming wish of the community. You came up with a disingenuous and duplicitous plan you knew would fail by asking for more seats that by the numbers and the history of the PRL, you had no right to have those extra seats. And now, we are here again to listen to you. Tell us you want a generic library run by a company. What we have and cherish will be torn apart. Maybe a business-run library would serve its function, but it is not community, it is not home. Be clear. You will forever be known as the board that destroyed our libraries if you move forward with this. And for what? Betsy Donahue.
Good evening. My name's Betsy Donahue. I live in the third district. I've been here for 40 years, raised our family here in the library. First, I want to say that I was extremely disappointed to hear that you voted to dis- to disband our association with Monkey Regional Library because of wanting more control and then already to hand our library to a national company. Okay, that doesn't make sense to me. You said, I was here on the evening, that there was a presentation that there was gonna, there were gonna be negotiations about staying, you know, conditions to stay with Monkey Regional Library, and if we decided not to, that we would withdraw within the contracted two-year period of time, because you had found that the one year that you had tried previously was kind of quick. And suddenly, I'm hearing today, two months, three months. So transparency is a word I've heard you use, and I'm not seeing it. So you said that there were no way to bid several companies to compare them if you want to go somewhere else besides the Monkey Regional Library. Suddenly, this is the only company that would work. And yet, his presentation said they were rated the best of. So that implies to me that there are other companies that do this work. Why are you not comparing? What is the rush? Why are you not putting things out to bid? This is public money. I understand there are public procurement regulations about how public money is spent, part of which involves putting things out to bid. So that the best use of our public money would be used. And so I have a lot of questions about that. He gave a very nice presentation. We heard two very nice presentations previously this evening that were voted down because of other reasons. So you know, just because he gave one nice presentation, I believe we should be comparing and closely looking at these things. If you're planning to spend $600,000, which you felt was such a lot of money, and now, you know, suddenly, it's easy. Having trouble putting it together. How much of our public tax money is being spent to go to their profit? It's a for-profit company, so we are buying services. Now, branches. Getting advice beyond the five of you on how to build a library, how to do an independent library, is it wise? You don't have the expertise. Personally, I don't have the expertise, and none of you do. So it's good, but why did we have to leave Monkey? We had all of that. We had Monkey Regional Library expertise. We had resources. We're not able to house the number of books that we are used to being, having access to in our two little libraries. So I do hope that reciprocal agreements are going to be sought, because, you know, we don't have that much space. And I hope that the community, you know, I'm, I would prefer that we stayed with Monkey Regional Library. That's gone, that's done, you've taken that out. But if we can't, the community needs to have a board with representation from many aspects of our community. We're not all the same. So and I'll just say this, if we are going to use the current, the county building that we, that was discussed, that starts, that's currently used for the parks and rent, wanting to renovate that to become a library, that was discussed. I do hope that anybody who's going to renovate that, that those companies are put out to bid, that it's not just that somebody happens to know. So I have a lot of questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Normally... I do not.
All right, Joshua Relic.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Relic. I live in the third district. I am against pulling out of the Monkey Regional Library. I believe that a vote should be taken to reverse that the same way it was done the last time, a couple of months ago. You voted to leave the Monkey Regional Library and then came back for a lot more time to look at it. We pull out a library, as people have said, you'll have a lot fewer resources. There are hundreds of thousands of books that are in the Monkey Regional Library system. Obviously, we don't have room for all those. These reciprocal agreements are great if we can work them out, but then you have to worry about, how are you gonna get the books back and forth? Is it gonna be as quick as the Monkey Regional Library? Because if not, then, you know, it's not as much opportunity in that case, and you'll end up with a lot fewer services. And, you know, the, I've seen that there's been one study that has been put forward that looks at costs and says that it would cost a lot more to do an independent library. This person who just did the presentation, he said it would cost less, but I would like to see them go, you know, line for line. What's the difference between the costs as the study suggested versus what he's suggesting? How is he saving money? And what, you know, how is it that those estimates are so different? I feel like that that question needs to be answered before we move forward. And, you know, I heard the reason was that, the reason why we voted to leave Monkey Regional Library is because we were having enough representation, even though we have, on the Monkey Regional Library, we have as much representation as a percentage of the money that we put forward. So Hanover is putting forward far more money that we, as a county, don't have to spend. And we are getting the benefit from all of that. And you're asking for more representation without, you know, really going into what exactly you don't like about the Monkey Regional Library that you already have. And, you know, I, I believe that it was the last meeting, I think County Administrator May have said that we're still looking into the deal between the Monkey Regional Library. And then by the end of the meeting, you've gone to closed session, you come out again, and then you voted to leave Monkey Regional Library. So I guess, how did it change within half a meeting between we're looking at the deal to, we're deciding to leave? And, you know, there, there are many who worry that, you know, the real reason we might be leaving Monkey Regional Library is because they may want to ban books based on ideological issues. I've, you know, of the people in the community, I've, I've only been able to find a few people that actually support lea- leaving the Monkey Regional Library. And most of them post on their Facebook page about how they want to ban things, which hopefully that isn't the reason you guys are doing it, because, I mean, that's kind of against American values. You know, libraries are supposed to be a place to exchange ideas, not attempt to control what views are, can be read there. And, you know, eventually, you guys are going to get re-election and probably a lot easier if you didn't have the weight of what could potentially be a more expensive library with less services. And, you know, that probably won't help in election time, so, you know, something to think about. And so I would just ask again that you please vote to go and, and join the Monkey Regional Library system the same way you did last time, make sure that we have actually compared the costs before just jumping out and then leaving and then trying to figure out if, if it's cheaper. It should have been the other way around. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Fran Frymark. Take a moment, please. My husband signed it. Yes, he did not check it, so we've got it. Thank you. Good evening, you all know me, I'm Fran Frymark. I live in Manquand, in District Four. And I don't want to be telling you, I don't, I have to be here to tell you this, but I'm going to. I am ashamed of myself for not seeing behind your politicians' smiles and manners to your complete disinterest in disrespect and contempt for the facts about the regional library system and the opinions of the regional library supporters. I will say shame on you for giving the lie to your pledge of transparency by coming into office with a hidden agenda to leave the Monkey Regional Library, making the original official decision in a closed meeting without telling us, without notice, and then telling us about it late at night. And shame on you for negotiating the regional contract in bad faith, saying that King William doesn't have its fair share of seats at the table on the library board or library board representation, when in fact we have more than our fair share and have for the past eighty years by both the percentage of the population of the region and by our financial contributions to the library. And shame on you for giving the lie to your pledge of fiscal responsibility by outsourcing our library service, contracting with a private for-profit company with no evidence that you follow King William County procurement procedures and policy or the Virginia Code that's referenced in the King William Policy or even the guidelines of the Virginia Public Procurement Act for sole source contracts. And shame on you for presenting outsourcing as a great boon to the county instead of what it is, a waste of King William's taxpayers' money and inexplicable hateful vendetta against the Monkey Regional Library, a financially irresponsible grab for control by you and your extremist radical un-American book banning internet troll allies. However long your political careers are, you will be hard pressed to find a way to do more damage to King William County than this action to leave the regional library and to outsource our services. You should be ashamed of yourselves. And finally, to paraphrase a quote from our former first lady Laura Bush, her favorite book, "If you have a conscience, you will suffer from this mistake."
Well, I don't think I can do better than that. Mr. Coonan probably has not read all of the facts available on Save the King William Library website. If he had, might still have given us all, but he would have been a little more ashamed of being so upbeat as a salesman. Anyway, going on from there, your behavior has been underhanded, deceitful and cowardly, in other words, shabby. Now, somebody has to profit from the wave of anger and ignorance sweeping the country. LSS, your private library service, will profit about twenty to twenty-five percent of King William's annual library payment, while cynical opportunists or super vipers try to jumpstart a political career on the ashes of the King William Library service. The LSS presentation has a slick surface, but underneath nationally, they're known to have a poor library and big profits, fulfilling their promise to generate returns and grow revenues and profits for investors. LSS manages the Manassas Park City Library, which is one library and a population similar to ours. According to the Manassas Park City Library budget, they now pay more for one library than we do for two. Their cost is seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The comparison between our current service and theirs is instructive. Both libraries subscribe to Hoopla, a resource for digital materials, audiobooks, ebooks, films, et cetera. Manassas Park City pays for twelve thousand items. The Monkey Regional Library's Hoopla contains one point eight million items. Manassas Park City may get a hundred thousand dollars worth of books or library items every year. The Monkey Regional Library purchases seven hundred thousand dollars of new library material every year that we have access to. It's the difference between horses and apples, and we know what you want to be in us. Thank you.
Chelsea Sauter.
I'm Chelsea Sauter, first district. And I will second the request to reverse the vote to leave the Monkey Regional Library. Twice in the last year, you have made reckless decisions about keeping the library in closed sessions without the community input, no town halls, no public hearings. The first time, an argument could be made that you acted in ignorance, which is bad enough. But this time, you cannot claim ignorance of the cost-saving benefits of remaining the regional system as they have been laid out for you repeatedly. The library is an essential resource and service for a healthy and prosperous community, and you have unanimously decided, with no input from the community, to remove that service from the cost-saving regional system and turn it over to a for-profit company that is beholden to no one, least of all the community that you serve. Because lest you forget, you work for us. We are your constituents, we elected you and you answer to us. But you have operated in lies and secrecy. You have complained that your job is hard and that you have been criticized unfairly, but you answer to us. You seem to have forgotten that. By operating in secrecy and making rash decisions without involving the community, you have lost what credibility you have. You have lost the trust of your constituents. How can we believe that you are driven into negotiations in good faith when you claim that the reason you are leaving PRL is not being given a third seat on the PRL board, when you have not bothered to fill the vacant seat that you currently have? This decision is foolhardy, financially irresponsible and callous. You are essentially firing the library staff without cause. These PRL employees are members of our community, and they have done nothing to justify eliminating, eliminating their jobs. All the community wants is for you to leave the library alone. There is nothing wrong with the library. The cost of running two branches amounts to less than two percent of the budget. So you cannot claim that your objection is financial. You have two seats on the Board of Trustees, one of which remains vacant, so you cannot convince me that you need a third. And also, how will you staff a five-member Board of Trustees if you can't, if you can't fill the two positions that you currently have? You have been shown overwhelming support in person at these meetings over the past six months, so you cannot come, so you cannot claim that you have a mandate or even a majority of the community with you on this decision. Also, what LSS described is a regional library system, which we already have. The fact that you continue to ignore the voices of your constituents shows that you do not care. You do not care about providing the library services the county needs. We already have that service, you told me to replace it. You do not care about financial responsibility. If you did, you would not be putting so much energy into saving at most point three percent of the annual county budget. You do not care about what your people want, and we will remember this come election time.
Lou Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everybody's been working hard, I'm sure you're getting a little tired and weary. But I think you deserve what you just done for the last two weeks. So I've always loved the Monkey Regional Library system, I'm from West Point, Virginia, seven seventy River Road. And I was there this afternoon, so this gentleman when he came in. And I asked him what he was doing in West Point, he said he was passing through. So I said, where are you going, Delta Mill to Richmond, or where are you passing? Well, he sort of admitted he was coming here. Anyway, I don't have too much to add because I think everything's been said that's most prominent. I thought that it was really important for you, what was said recently about not having enough seats and then not filling one that's been vacant for ages. And then I've heard, this is just personal for me, but I've heard so much about how you're banning books. That's as bad as burning witches. There was a really good program on PBS recently about the witches in Scotland that were just mortified by the same kind of thinking and burned or killed. And then that came to America too. Do we want to have that kind of thinking? I thought you all were educated people, had a broad prospect, not so worried about what somebody said about some book that might mention sex. I know when I was in the eighth grade, Lady Chatterley's Love was bad supposedly from our school. First thing we did, when they found it somewhere else so we could all read it. So I think banning books is not bad. Let's see, I see, you know, somebody I wanted to say. I, I think the people we have now in the West Point Library are so capable and wonderful. And they told me the day they were worried about losing their jobs. So I hope that won't be true. And I don't understand why you suddenly decided to get away from the regional library. When I was taking classes in Williamsburg, the, my West Point Library could get me any book from the University of William and Mary or from Richmond, University of Richmond, like in a minute. So I, I think you should consider that that's still possible. Anyway, I appreciate your time.
Thanks. That is conclusion, this is a comment, we'll move over to new business. This will be Dave Wilson for the appropriation to the children's services. Chair, we're sort of, as I was up here some time ago, the talk about the impact of IDPs coming from the high school, the impact of the CSA budget. I am here today to say that number is, the number of students is now fluctuating between nine and eleven. Those students have now gone from part-time. Between nine and eleven, and the students have gone from part-time to full-time. And the cost of the services is up about thirty-three percent. What that means is, is we have to ask for an additional between now and year end fiscal year, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to order to fund those IDPs, the five oh four support coming from the school. We thought we had it covered in our initial discussion related to what we had to cover from the government, but it's not. There's never been out this, in the store. The total cost of the services, counting out, at two point four million dollars, up to one point two in our original budget. So I'm here to ask for approval for community to fund those student services. And it's by code, that code, so we have to, but, that's one to make sure that, of course, evaluate and make sure we have an understanding of that. Just from other, other members, this will be for, for motion for the approval of Resolution twenty-five that says the appropriations to the additional FY twenty twenty-five funds to the Children's Services Act, which is in total an additional increase of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That will take our, our total support, fully accounted, and also supported by the state, to eight hundred ninety-six thousand fifty-four dollars.
And we knew we were going to owe some.
Yes, we did, but it just, Mr. Hodges, it just jumped very, very quickly.
Right.
It did the same at the end of last year, it just obviously, the rate and the students going from part-time to full-time. There's, this causes a difference. I wanted to make sure that more was aware of that. And I will adjourn motion.
Nobody really wants to do it.
I know, they don't.
We don't have a choice, but I'll make that one.
Mr. Hodges made a motion, you have a second.
I'll second.
All right, we have a second, say so, can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Van Croft.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Chair.
Aye.
Resolution. Sure, we had a really good meeting today with the school, is to talk about these type of issues and how we can support them also to make more efficient. So this meeting will continue until our next slide. Thank you. All right. Number two, because that works for the administrative.
Thank you, Chair Catwick. First, I would like to say, I think everybody is probably aware that we were closed one full day last week for the weather and then opened late the following day. That's for the people that work in this building, but there are a lot of county employees that work, no matter what their positions are, specifically all of our law enforcement, our fire, our EMS, anyone that works at the animal shelter. Those are 24/7, 365 jobs. And I just want them to know that I and everyone that lives in the county appreciate that, and we acknowledge that, and I want to thank them for being out in what is potentially a hazardous situation and some of the jobs that they're committed to do. So for those of you that are here, thank you. For those of you that are not here, I hope someone will let you know that we desperately appreciate that. On to our next upcoming meetings and dates. We do have a planning commission meeting on March 4th. We have our next Board of Supervisors meeting on March 10th. I want to make sure that everybody is aware, we originally had a joint budget workshop with schools scheduled for tomorrow. That has now been canceled. We did have a meeting of a few people, as Ms. Wilson mentioned earlier today, but we will actually be doing a full-scale joint workshop with the schools until the middle of March. The King William 250 Committee is going to be meeting in this room on Thursday of this week, which is the 27th of February. That meeting's a little earlier than most other meetings. It starts at 4:30, right, as the county offices close. It is open to anyone, and our commissioner, Ms. Funkhouser, is asking that anyone that is interested at all in helping with the celebration for the courthouse on April 12th should come to that meeting this Thursday because they are looking to get a lot of volunteers. It's going to be a great event, and anybody that's willing to help would be appreciated. County-wise, we do have a new director of the regional animal shelter. Ms. Alyssa Ellison started with us on Tuesday of last week, and she brings a lot of experience working not only on the law enforcement side of animal control, but also in shelters, and we're very excited to have her here. Again, our commissioner would like for me to remind everybody, for, I guess, the very last time, that business license renewals and tax relief applications are due March 3rd, because we will not have another board meeting before that deadline. And high mileage discount applications are due on May 1st, and we should still have all of those applications available, all the different county locations that I've mentioned before. This past week, we were notified that the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality's Septic Local Partner Program has started administering our Fight the Flood program grant to address septic systems in King William that need to be repaired. It's a first-come, first-served grant. The funds are available to assist property owners that need to replace or repair their septic systems if they meet certain criteria, and those applications are accepted on a rolling basis until the funds are exhausted. So the sooner the better if you qualify. The absolute deadline, the last day they'll accept an application, is June 30th of this year, but if the funds are exhausted before that, then the deadline will become earlier. There are flyers that should have been put in the back of the room where we keep the agendas for people if you would like to grab one. We're also going to make it accessible on our website, and there's a QR code on that flyer that you can scan and get all the information about how to apply and what the requirements are to be eligible. I think I mentioned this at the last meeting as well. We are reconstituting the county newsletter, and if you would like to receive it by mail, you need to submit your email address to bos.clerk@kmbc.gov. I've not received a lot yet, so if you would like to submit yours, please do so. The last thing that I would like to mention, we do have a little bit of sad news for our animal shelter employees and have asked that you think of them over the next few days. Our animal shelter has been in existence for quite some time, close to 20 years in the site that it's currently in. And when they opened that facility, because everybody there was an animal lover, they got a shelter cat that was the pet of those employees. Her name was Callie, and she had to be put down last week because she was in kidney failure. You just keep those individuals on your mind, because they dearly love animals, and that was kind of a hard time for them. I don't know if they'll be getting another shelter cat or not, but we just need to remember them and what they're doing.
All right. Before a close meeting, we'll turn over to my global administration.
Consideration of the time we're getting and what we can do at present, just thank you for those who continue to show support for us. It means a lot. I appreciate that you're paying us, but we are out.
I just have a question for the chair. Chair, do we have a detailed list? You mentioned the upgrade to the revenue system. Do we have a detailed list of what the costs are going to be?
Yes, sir. It was provided to you. Yes, sir. It was provided to you.
Was? In the book, with all that other $10. And that's about all I had. Folks, we do know, and we've been advised, I know from about four or five attorneys, that if we start banning books, we will get sick. That is a known fact. And I don't know what the attitude of everybody else is, but that's not my fault. And thank y'all.
I just want to start off and say I appreciate all the speakers who came out tonight and our presenters. Also want to give a quick shout out, kind of stealing your seat, but maybe Hick Fire Department, if you drive up and down Route 30, you've seen the volunteer signs, so I just want to give a shout out to them. They're noticeable, and I hope it works, and you can get some volunteers to help you guys out. I also want to say, just based off our public hearings tonight, our county needs to find some balance when it comes to residential and commercial. I actually ran on trying to figure out ways to offset the residential tax rate here in our county. We do need business revenue here. That is going to involve growth. I know a lot of people don't want growth, but we have to come up with a balance. In 2022, the orchards, which is that development that is being, I guess, under construction, if you want to call it, if you drive down 360, going towards Titanic and look to left, all that's going to be turned into more residential, 750-plus homes. We can't stop it. It's coming. And what's that going to do to our county? It's going to put a hurt on our schools, our fire and EMS, our police department, our county as a whole. I mean, I hear people crying, we need grocery stores. We need, what are we going to do for all these houses? We are going to have some extremely tough choices and decisions to make in this year and next to try to budget, to try to plan, because it hasn't been done. It hasn't. So we have a lot of things we have to look at across the board, all departments in this county, to make hard decisions. So I just want the public to be aware. We hear your cries. We see Facebook posts about the growth, and what in the world are we up here doing? The five of us, we try to figure out how to fix it, because it's coming whether we want it or not. So that's all I have to say.
Mr. Edwards.
Not being able to see the audience, thank you all for attending today and bringing forth your opinions, and we are diligently trying to look at all the facts and figures and everything that goes with the library and make our best decision. And that's the best we can do. Think that's really all I have to say. Thanks to the staff and thanks for everybody. Sorry I couldn't get there tonight. I had some pretty unavowable wishes. Thank you.
All right, for the second time, I don't need to reiterate something before having my other members did. I will say there was some tragic events on Key Beach in the past week, and I just want to offer my condolences to what Chair Wonkin and his team may be going through. I've been there with kind of rebels all the way across the whole community. So as we leave tonight, keep those numbers and our blue line family in your prayers. Thanks, everybody, for coming. With that, it's already over tonight. I'll move to our close meeting.
Chair, I make a motion to move to a close session to discuss contract negotiations and personnel issues. The personnel matter.
The personnel matter regards a county employee and the contract service, library systems and services. So we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
De opposed. We are in a close session. So, you know, mute yourself unless you're here. Mr. Edwards. Mr. Edwards, can you unmute yourself?
Mr. Edwards.
I think I got you now.
Yep.
Okay.
We're back now. Can I get a motion to reconvene in open session?
I make a motion to reconvene in open session.
All right, first and second, all in favor? De opposed. All right. And I get to certify, a motion for certification of closing.
Which would be a motion to certify that the matters you went into close session were authorized under the Freedom of Information Act, and while in close session you only discussed the matters for which you convened in close session, that would be a motion.
I make that motion, yes.
So the motion has second. Can I get a roll call, Mr. Edwards?
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Van Croft.
Aye.
Chair Catwick.
Aye.
All right, so we have the action from closing meeting.
Yes, Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve entering an agreement on library systems and services and authorize the county administrator to take all necessary steps to execute the agreement.
All right, we have a motion. You have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second. Mrs. Facebook, can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Van Croft.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Chair Catwick.
Aye.
Yes, Chair, I'd like to make another motion to approve the determination of use of sole source for the contract.
Motion, you have a second.
Second.
Next second. Ms. is what you might get a roll call.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Van Croft.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Chair Catwick.
All right, now let's keep that. With that, that is the end of the meeting. Can I get a motion?
Chair, I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
De opposed. All right.
The auditor.